Six o'clock, July nineteenth, twenty sixteen. I call to order Trophy Club Municipal Utility District, number one. We have a quorum and we're missing Director Wilson and Director Thomas. But we do have a quorum with Director Rose, myself, and Director Hayes. Citizens comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is permitted to take action on or discuss any presentation made to the board at this time concerning any, an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to three minutes of, or the time limit determined by the president or the presiding officer. Reports and updates. Number one, fire department report for June twenty sixteen. A, operations report. B, volunteer recruitment report. C, status standard operating guidelines. D, status of building maintenance. And E, status of PPE purchase. Chief?
Okay, operations report wise, for the month of June, we moved obviously to July, we had, actually, we were up to a total of six hundred and seventy-eight calls for the year. But for last week, thirteen calls for service. Those were five fire alarms, one electrical hazard. We had one report of structure fire, one motor vehicle accident, and five public service calls. There were seven calls for service for EMS, for transport. Two were against medical advice and one was in assist to a citizen. So total twenty calls for service. No mutual aid was provided during this reporting period. Mutual aid was received by multiple agencies on two occasions during this period, listed at the bottom of the report, but I'll mention it anyway here. On July ninth, two thousand sixteen, Trophy Club Fire Department received mutual aid from multiple departments on two separate incidents. First incident was in reference to a structure fire that resulted in a possible lightning strike. There was no fire, but we received mutual aid. Trophy Club Fire Department arrived on the scene and conducted a thorough investigation to determine no hazards were present. On a separate incident, we received a multiple agency response in reference to a motor vehicle collision. The MVC was investigated. No injuries were obtained by those involved. The one lightning strike we did have, while we were assigned to that and had units staged, received another call, which I reassigned Westlake and Roanoke to and then handled for us while we were tied up. So that call went again without any issues or problems. Training wise, fourteen staff members received continuing education provided by Best EMS for a total of fifty-six hours. They've been extremely busy over there with everything for their doing, taking care of the building. We'll get to that in a little bit, to training, to getting some things knocked out that we've been working on for a little while. You want me to move over to the next item?
How'd the camp go?
The camp went very well. Brian Peters did an incredible job. We had, for a first year camp, it was absolutely incredible. The students loved it. I think the parents enjoyed it just as much. They covered a lot of material. We're already looking at what we can do next year, what they can do and enhancing that, maybe adjusting a couple of things. They didn't want to put too much in there and run out of time, so they wanted to kind of test the waters, if you will. So the fire camp was, was an awesome first year start with that.
How many attendees did you have?
I think it was sixteen.
Sixteen, good number. Okay. Do you want to just go on to the next one?
Yeah, the volunteer recruitment report, we don't have anything to report at this time. We've been working on our full-time staff and getting some things dialed in and tuned up there. We've got three volunteers. The program we have in place needs to be revisited as the way to how we conduct our training, training requirements, calls, how they're received, how they respond. The three volunteers we have do an excellent job. I think we haven't really defined well for them yet how to respond. There's been a couple of occasions where they responded, taking apparatus. One, it was actually a lightning strike, a possible structure fire I was on where accidentally, I think he didn't mean to do it, he, when one unit went in route and he returned himself without being cleared by command. We talked about that when we got back and he just thought he wasn't needed at the scene. So we discussed that issue that you have to really check in with the incident commander before you, before you release yourself. So we'll be looking at that program as well as our part-time program as well, to make sure that we've got the part-timers we have on staff, which is currently six, that are contributing, that they're there, that they want to be there, and to see what we're doing to require them to be a member of the Trophy Club Fire Department part-time staff. The standard operating guidelines, the SOGs, I know my first meeting, I think it was my second day here, until I thought I'd be ready by August or September. With everything that's been going on in the fire department, I don't see that right now. I'm going to start hitting those again next week. There's been a lot of other assignments that we've had to take care of that are pushed in front of that. But again, I'm hoping that's one of the things we're going to start working on that next week.
I mean, this is totally unrelated to you. You kind of jumped into the pot after the fact, but it's been going on for three years now. I mean, we've, we're told, okay, it's done. We, we were told captains were doing it. They all participated, turned in information. We had a resident, Lou, I think, that was involved in it. We had a board member involved in it and went to the town. They, you know, made their changes, came back. We sent it to our attorney. I mean, it's three years and we have an ILA that references SOPs. And it, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's a lot. I mean, there's other fire departments around, which you've been part of some, so it's not like reinventing the wheel.
Well, it's, it's not an easy project. I've had a hand in helping departments for twenty years now through our state academy and through the national academy, helping them write their SOGs and SOPs. It used to be in the old days, it was fairly easy because we were limited as to what we were doing as our response and our capabilities. It's become a very technical job. What I've already noticed that we're missing, we're missing several SOPs when it comes to simple things. If we're talking SOPs and SOGs, and SOP being a policy procedure that defines what happens when you're involved in an accident, and SOG, how we operated an emergency incident, the guideline, we're missing some on, on how we even hire back overtime and whether there's a mandatory overtime list. There's, there's backing up and having a backer. There's several I notice that we're missing that we're going to have to, to grab a hold of. I've got mountains of them at my fingertips. It's just a matter of getting them all and again, sitting down and going, okay, I know we're missing this and this and this, and to implement those there and get them all taken care of. Now, I know we had, there's two versions I have there and I'm, again, I'm still trying to go through things in the office. There's one that's marked up and there's one that's not. And I'm thinking the one that's marked up may have come back from the attorney with red markups on the right-hand side. I'm looking for the disc that they're all supposed to be on, so I'm hoping to find that. And, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't take us that much longer. It is, it is a lot bigger project than some people think. Writing SOGs and SOPs for a fire and EMS department is, is not a, a easy undertaking.
I can, I can get you the, a CD with them on there.
Okay, that'd be perfect.
You know, you can understand my frustration. It's been three years. Nothing should take three years, you know, to write. And you mentioned some, some things that seem like they relate to personnel matters as far as rehiring and stuff. That would go through the town at this point. And as far as I understood, they had gone through all their checks and rechecks of the policy. Do you have, you mentioned August and September. Can it be August rather than September?
You know...
Can you, I guess, can you roll out something? There's going to be, it's a rolling document. It's going to change, you know, most of the time. There's going to be additions.
Yeah, I, I think we can. It's, it's a matter of, of just going through it again. I've already identified some, some areas on the fire ground that we're missing when it comes to how we run fires and everything from radio signatures to floor designations to when people are inside, how we talk on the radios and so on and so forth, that we, we've got some discrepancies that we need to work through. I would love, I'd love to have it. I, you know, I would love to have it by the end of August for you. I really would. I mean, that's, I have every intention of doing that. It's just, I'll be honest with you, every time we get ready to hit a couple of things, I get a lot of other little projects. And some of them are pretty time-consuming, you know, looking up for different things and so on and so forth, that I'm still finding my way around the computer and who's got what and who's referenced what. And when you've got guys off, you're trying to call them at home or call them on cell phones or have them come in. I had to have one of them come in and assist me with some documentation that I don't have because the captains have specific areas that they take care of. It's just the fire chief. There's no staff. There's no secretary. There's no, you know, and I know it's a smaller operation, but like I said, I'm doing the best I can to get information, turn around as quick as I can without ordering guys back at a time and a half rate to come in off duty to, to provide me with the information. I would like to have them for you in August. I really would.
If possible, like to shoot for August, even if you have to roll something out of basic plan because as I said, it's going to be tweaking. Last time I saw it, it didn't address the automatic aid section. Hopefully someone changed that or added that.
Well, and that's got to be revised as well. Our automatic and mutual aid is, is okay, but it's, it's weak in some areas. We're utilizing some folks for certain things and we're not utilizing other people for, for other areas. How the response cards are written, them, those in itself are, are weak because they don't identify who we're going to have on a working fire fill in for us. If we respond to a fire right now and we have Roanoke coming in with an engine, Westlake's supposed to send an engine ambulance, but sometimes they just send us an ambulance depending on what they have. Southlake's been sitting there with a firehouse, a baseball throw away from the town limits with also a chief officer, and we're not bringing them, and that's going to change. Everything we do, as you're aware of, on the fire ground is task generated and task, you know, related, where every, whether it's advance initial attack line and a search and ventilation, a backup line, relieving those crews, you know, the days of just trying to get by have to go away. Everybody else is utilizing a much more proficient system. I instituted that system in Denton County, you know, in two thousand, and everybody jumped on board and some people didn't jump on as quickly as others. So some of those responses we have to look at as well. Perfect example of how well it did work though was the two structure fires we had pretty much simultaneously. Though Roanoke and Westlake didn't make it to the Edinburgh fire, Roanoke handled another call for us while Westlake was busy, but they both ended up at my fire. Another example was the other day, the lightning strike that I talked about earlier. I had both of them staged while we were investigating. We had another call and they turned around, spun out and took care of that for us. So when they're available, it's a great, it's a great thing. When we have storms, the thing we have to remember is the storm isn't just here. Everybody has their lightning strikes and their calls going on. They're all busy. So every time you call for someone, they can be tied up or handling all calls. And that's what happened with those two fires where, where different were free.
You referenced them earlier, where we have automatic aid, but it's only with Roanoke and Westlake. In the dual lightning strikes, you didn't know if they were going to send something or you relied on them and then you found out that they were on their own calls. So luckily, Southlake and other people, Argyll, Colliville, they were there to respond.
Right, with the exception of, Roanoke got in pretty quick for us. They handled the one lightning strike and then moved over to mine. But that was my whole point was, you know, we've got to bring enough help in initially. There's not a fire department around that doesn't want to respond to help their neighbors. They're all pretty energetic about, especially with a report of a structure fire. I've already, I met last week with a bunch of area chiefs that are more than willing to send us enough apparatus. I think people never were tapped before. You know, while we're, while we're at a fire, if we pull up to a report of a fire and it's actually declared a working fire, there's an actual fire, rather than just one pumper filling our station, needs to be two of them in there because if we strike an extra alarm, one pumper coming to the scene does nothing for you when you've got to relieve three crews. If one's the attack crew, one's the search crew, and one's the backup crew. So the chief from Grapevine, the chief from Southlake, you know, the chief from Flowermont, some of the departments we've never tapped. Flowermont's got a new firehouse going in right over here, on three seven seven by the airport. As I said, Southlake, they were actually texting me during the one fire saying, chief, anytime we're ready. And their chief actually called Chief Star and said, just hang on, it's being changed. The cards are in place. They're, they're just, they're just weak. And I leave the firehouse every day and I tell them to think big. With everything they do, think big, go long. We can always turn people around.
During the fire, you were pretty voiceless on the communication. Have we had improvements on that, making sure everyone's on the same frequency or dispatch is aware of what's going on?
It's getting better. The county took over, took on a major, everybody did, to go digital. And what happened was we were caught in this month or so period of not everybody was switched over. So you have some departments coming in that are still analog. You have some that are switched over to digital. Then you have some that are in different zones. To complicate the even worse is we're set up with, with our different tax channels, but we're already using the one over at the other fire. So the problem I had was I had three different groups of people that couldn't talk to each other. So I had to take the deputy chief from Grapevine and make him my communications person for a selected group there and take another chief and make him the rep, so at least we could all talk. But this all happened early on. We had heavy fire and I backed everybody out, went defensive because I wasn't going to kill a firefighter because we couldn't talk on the radio. And that was a major issue to begin a fire. Plus, the fire was, was pushing a lot quicker than, than what we had liked.
Yeah, as I said, August on those SOGs would be much appreciated. Does anyone have any questions on that item? Anyone? Okay, next one?
Okay, we're talking about the status of building maintenance. Okay. We're moving very, I sent Ms. McKnight a couple of pictures this morning. We've got, the electrician there is almost finished. There's a couple minor things they have to order parts for, and then the cord reel will come back and fix that. But out of all the issues with all electrical problems, almost all of them have been taken care of. The outside lights are working. The station looks beautiful. If you get a chance to see it tonight or whatever, everything's lit up really nice. The newer lights, they're LEDs. So that whole system's been replaced. I think as you were form before, a lot of lights inside, according to electrician, were failing because of water, because of the condensation. Everything was kind of tied together. So electrical wise, we're waiting on just, they left today a couple more parts and the cord reel for the apparatus band will have that done. We contacted the roofer again. He was supposed to been here already. He's behind, as he says. We called him again today. The temporary repair he has, has not leaked as, as of yet. So it's holding. The leak in the front around the, the vent that we found, our guys were able to patch and that hasn't leaked either. So I think we're good with that until he gets here. We haven't seen anything. Air conditioner wise, just when we started to get the condensation line wrapped and get that whole leak problem taken care of, we had the air conditioner go out to the server room, which we were able to replace. At the same time that happened with the air conditioner, a second floor go out, which we were able to replace. I asked to make sure that, that the air conditioner tech checked the other air conditioners, there's a total of five, to make sure we just don't keep chasing our tail hair every time one of these fails. We had another leak that the TML claims adjusted. It was there looking at the roof noticed above the restroom across from the radio room. That was a cause of another pipe that wasn't wrapped correctly. That's something I think our guys are going to be able to do. It's, it's a small section to take care of that. What's left air conditioning wise is the twenty-four vents that are in, I think, as it was noted before. Half of those when they were installed probably should, they shouldn't have been. They were outdated. I think somebody pulled them off the shelf to use them. They're not insulated. They, the condensation builds up and then they, they leak and they weep as well on the floor. So those had to be ordered. Some of those had to be actually made. So we're, we're waiting. That'll finish off the air conditioning system. Everything's cooling in there just fine. It's just a matter of getting those vents changed out. As for...
You mentioned the roof. I think it's been a year or maybe longer. We had a wind storm that, you know, blew the steeple off the church and also blew the ridge cap off. Is that the leak that's on there?
Well, the TML adjuster found a deficiency with the ridge cap on top of the bays that
That's the same one.
There's an actual gap that's up there. So our roofer has been asked to address that as well besides the flashing that is going to be taken care of that was originally leaking.
We had that ridge cap replaced, I believe, not too long ago because it actually tore open and they screwed it back on temporarily from what the prior chief told us. And he said, oh, that's been replaced.
It probably, to be honest, if it, the problem has been if, having been a roofer for a long time myself, if you don't cover everything right, it gives just the ability for the wind lift underneath there and pull anything off, especially when you're dealing with, with an aluminum roof like that. It's a great roof, but if it's not fastened correctly, it just gives the wind, especially as high as it is, a chance to take it off. So he's going to be looking at that as well when he comes back with the roof.
Okay. My, my point being is if it was repaired prior, maybe we can get it under warranty for whoever did it incorrectly.
Okay. We'll, we'll look at that as well. The vehicle bay filters, we're currently getting bid still. Again, getting contractors out is not always the easiest thing. The current four filters we have that were brought from the old firehouse do not appear to be working as efficiently as they should. We've got some carbon buildup in some of the filters. We changed out the air conditioning system. They're supposed to be for about that size. They're just not working. So we're looking at the two systems that actually have a hose system that fastens to the exhaust, two different brands, two different mechanisms. But the current system, when you, no matter what happens, when you start the rig up, the exhaust goes into the air. And you're relying on a system that's more of an air cleaner, not exhaust system, to purge it. The other system, the hose actually fastens, there's magnets on the one and there's, you know, the other, to the exhaust. And the moment it starts up, off it goes. It gets clean and it's pushed out in the atmosphere without it entering into the air, getting them closed and everything else and so forth.
When we were looking at building that building, Chief Thomas and a couple firefighters were involved in the design and they, the mud board was basically, okay, build it right, whatever. And the decision was made to utilize the system that currently is in there. Because we went around like Colliville, I think it's off Johnson Road, they have the pull-away hoses and stuff and, okay.
Yeah, there, there's several things that, you know, they're just, I, I would call them some accidental design flaws with the firehouse. How, how they, how they, how they're able to respond to calls in the middle of the night out of the bunks where, there wasn't a whole lot of thought put in there, whether there should have been a slide put in so they don't have to run down the hallway, down the stairs and out the door, which delays the response. Couple other things, the, the bays, how the, the sensors were placed. It makes it hard to put any timers in there. There should have been sensors on the outside and inside. The sensor should have been replaced four feet back. The current sensors we have right now, the way the ladder truck is with the bumper and the ladder, if the door starts to come down, someone hits the butt, whatever happens, accidentally, whatever, it starts to come down. If it was a pumper with the bumper, it would hit that, break the beam, and it would send the door back up. The problem with the ladder truck is you've got the, the main ladder that sticks out as far as the bumper. And as, if the door comes down about the time it, this breaks the beam, you've already hit it and you can't stop the rig that quick. That's why a lot of the doors get, so I've been looking more at how, the way we have to have the rig stacked, we can't push them back that, that four extra feet that, that sensor needs to be where you have the beams go across, so that wouldn't take care of that. And we're, we're still, we're still looking at that.
Okay. You mentioned the design. That same design building is in a number of places within the metroplex.
Yeah, I know the architects, they built five, eight firehouses for me, B R W, Gary DeRees. When I see them, I actually told somebody I'm going to kind of have some fun with them because they do, they do a very good job. I don't know what happened and how things were, were changed out or whatever from who was set up as a general contractor. There's a whole lot of, in the past, things that really just aren't, aren't pertinent now right now. And I've, I've reminded the guys each and every time that we can, we can talk about the past all we want. What's right now in front of us is what we need to fix and take care of. And it is what we have and we have to do our best to make it the best we can and get everything working, you know, properly.
Okay, I just wanted to say one thing. Vice President Wilson joined the meeting at six twenty-three to make a note of that.
Okay. The next thing, the fire station security. Another area that, that we just missed was how, to enter in the firehouse, everywhere you have to use either your key code, key card, or there's two, a couple sections you have to punch in, a combination, except the laundry room. You can walk right in if the bay doors are open and walk right in without any problems. So we've got a locksmith coming out that, that takes care of that and is going to give us the estimate on that one. There's also been several times that, that people using, utilizing the break room have had access. If you do that, they have access to the entire second floor, all the personal lockers and so on and so forth. Not that we have bad people coming and using the, the meeting room, the community room. It's just not good for security. So we're going to address that as well. So we're looking at a key card, the laundry room, out from the bay to inside, a key card that leads out, that you can do the key card to punch, so the guys aren't delayed at all. But people that are using the community room or the conference room will still have access to the break room if they need it or whatever. So we've got several locks upstairs that aren't working. And to be honest, and I mentioned this to Jennifer, that's just a lot of normal owning a building, things settle. I think a lot of those are just adjustments when the locksmith comes in. It's not a design flaw, you know, especially a building that big. When you own it, you know, just like anybody's home, you're going to have different issues that pop up with it. So, so that's next. The fire station plumbing, as, as we reported earlier, the two leaking faucets in the kitchen were replaced. That's not a problem anymore. The telephone system, the main number was never set up as a voicemail box. I was in there Memorial Day for a few hours and I saw the red blinking light and I asked the guys if they would check the messages for me and they could. And I came in the next day and I want to micromanage. I despise micromanagers, but I sat down and I said, tell me those aren't the same messages from yesterday. And nobody could get into the system. So I went to IT and when we called, nobody went, there's no, you reach the Trophy Club Fire Department, this emergency immediately hang up and down. I don't want any of that stuff. So when IT looked into it for us, the reason I, I couldn't get an answer is because the voicemail box was full probably for about a year and a half ago. And the majority of the messages were from two thousand thirteen prior to. We deleted the messages because none of them need to be addressed, but I'll be honest with you, it's upsetting to know that a citizen, let's say an elderly citizen could call in about a smoke prob, sometimes they'll call in because they don't want to dial nine-one-one and not want all the fire trucks or, someone should be able to call, leave a message for the fire department. That's all been addressed. That's all taken care of. The firefighters can take care of that. You know, it just never, one of those things that just never was addressed when it comes to that.
Have we ever got the speaker phones in both conference rooms? Because I went down there for a meeting one time and they only had one speaker phone.
I know for a fact the, the speaker phone is, along with the keyboard and all that in the conference room, there's one off to the side. I'd have to look and see where the one is. You talking about the training room, the other one?
Yeah, there's a training room and I think it was in the training room at that time or.
No, it was in the conference room and we needed it in the training room.
Training room, right.
Okay.
And IT came down and said, we only have one. You know, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, let's say, I mean, I, I can't answer for someone that's not there. So, but if we need to order another one, we'll look at addressing that. But I do know there's the one for sure because I already used it for a conference call. The sheetrock repair and painting, we're waiting till we have everything addressed with the roof because we don't want to take a chance, of course, of fixing everything and having it, you know, leak again. The fire station fire alarm system, there's a switch that's bad on a pul, a pull station that's faulty. Captain Sykes, who's in, who's in charge with his station of, of buildings and grounds is, gave them a last warning. If they don't come out, we're going to seek another company out to come out and fix it. They should have been out already to take care of that. The exterior of the firehouse, I'm, I'm really excited about. I know when I first got here, the first meeting I had, I asked why there was, I asked why there were so many weeds and sections of the yard were brown and so on and so forth and lights weren't working. And again, each, each shift has been taking care of a lot of things there. One firefighter in particular, Kalu Evans, has taken ownership of the outside. We had bushes landscaping that were in front of downspouts that we had to move. We had to get rid of rose bushes that were diseased. As everybody knows, that, that problem everybody's going through. In the front, the way it was designed, every time it rained, the mulch would wash down underneath the, we're getting ready to build a nine eleven memorial, would wash right down to that. Same thing out into the front drive. So they were able to put edging around there, some block, some, you'll see it's a landscaping block to keep that from running down there. In the back, all the bushes in the back are on a hill because of how they were built. Half of them had their roots exposed, which you know what's going to happen if we don't take care of that because they're, they were getting washed out. So again, what Kalu did to help some of his guys is we went and were able to obtain some more that, that came out really nice. Some more of the landscaping blocks and they built that up level and filled it. So those bushes should be fine. Some of the bushes that were deceased over in front, they've replaced. They've weeded. We, we put a storage shed up so we can move, we can move the items that were in our sprinkler riser room that shouldn't have been there out. The, the firehouse and now with the lights, it's just, I'm excited to see it tonight. The pictures last night, everything's dialed in. The guys are big believers as, as I, I am that this should be the showplace. When you come around that corner, that place should pop and it should really be that place that stands out. And I think we're there. I'm really excited about where they've gotten some things. And now they're just looking at maybe some plants that'll add some color. But they've really done a good job. But a lot of little maintenance issues outside have been taken care of. The coping stones on the side here were designed, they just are sliding off. They're all loose. So they're fixing those as well. A lot of little things that are taken care of, but I'm just really proud of what everybody's been. I mean, everybody. All three shifts are pitched in. I gave you the update in the, the electrical. What we also discovered was that the warning lights out on Trophy Club Drive for civilian vehicles, emergency warning lights weren't working. We've got a firm coming out that takes care of that to look at that, to find out why, whether it's an optocom issue or a battery issue because they're all solar powered. But again, now with, everybody's now starting to receive all their area of assignments, we're breaking down the areas that really were overlooked before. I think a lot of it was just that. Just the fact that one shift is in charge of everything to take care of inside and outside the building. I think you're going to see that all go away. Just the fact that one shift is in charge of everything to take care of inside and outside the building, I think you're gonna see that all go away. Not to embarrass Dustin, he's sitting here as the acting captain today, our uniform situation, um, how we account for our inventory has all changed and he has his own room for it and, uh, so I, I just think a lot of areas, and again, um, not to, you know, throw anything anybody's way, just there weren't assignments. If, you know, things weren't divvied up, uh, people weren't empowered. I think the more we empower the, the firefighters down there, in fact, a couple of them keep asking for things to be assigned and I say, we're gonna get to you. The three captains are doing a great job, I think a couple of them are overloaded with what they do and they need to spread the wealth to make sure, that those things, um, uh, don't, you know, end up overlooked. Uh, we've got a minimum amount of people and, you know, we still have a lot of other things to do, trainee wise, besides responding to emergencies, all the public education function, so once we do that, we can get all that taken care of, so.
I, I have a question, I hate to take you all the way back to the A C, but, um, I, I had an email, I guess Renee, maybe you can speak on this more, but she was trying to register the new equipment and one of the warranties stated that the unit is, um, the unit is installed in a residential application, which is an owner occupied, single family residence. No commercial applications are allowed. And it was one of the units that you all had installed over there, so the question is, has that been resolved, are they gonna give us a war- are they gonna cover it in a warranty?
I would have, I would have to talk to them, I would have to look at that, but when we asked the air conditioner people to come out, they're the professionals, we told them what we needed replaced and they replaced it with like units. Uh, the, the same unit that went out, I think that's the one you're talking about is the one for the server room?
Renee, is it, I don't know.
It's the upstairs.
Is the upstairs one?
It's the upstairs.
Allied enterprise equipment.
Okay, I'll, I'll look into that.
I talked to Clint with B N C today, because I had sent an email back asking those questions. And what he responded back to the girl in your office, didn't answer my questions. So I called him and talked to him today and he said, the resi- the commercial part of the, the fire station being commercial, that they do not do the extended warranty. So there's a five-year warranty on the unit and no, no opportunity for an extended warranty. Because it's a commercial application.
Okay.
So, that's what he said today. And also, the paperwork that I had did not have the model number or serial number on the outside unit for the upstairs. And he said those numbers are on the actual compressor. So I let, I, I sent, I left a message for Gary today, if he would get someone out to get that information for me, so that I can, uh, register that last warranty. I've already done the one for the server room, that one was a piece of cake, that I, I registered that online, had everything I needed. But the other one, I didn't have, I had the coil, the, uh, the evaporator coil warranty and, but I did not have the unit warranty, so.
Did, did the, did the A C guy explain that in advance, that it would not be covered on the extended warranty? If it were used in a commercial application?
I'd have to check, I'd have to check my notes with that and talk to Captain Sykes, he's the one that was, uh, handling the air conditioning unit. What he did tell me and we spoke about was, the upstairs unit was a, uh, two-stage unit. And the air conditioner, uh, folks recommended that not be a two-stage unit, they said there was no need for a two-stage unit. I wanted their assurance that, that was gonna work and cool and do, and, and, and perform adequately, and they said absolutely it will. Uh, that was the difference, I think, of six thousand versus what we actually paid. I went on a recommendation of the people we hired who are in the business as to which unit should have been upstairs, cause that's why I have to trust. So I don't know if that had anything to do with it or not, but, um, we went with a single phase instead of a, 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 a two-phase, but I don't think, or stage, I don't think that has anything to do with the, the warranty or anything like that, whether we went with a one or two. But I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll follow up on that.
Okay, and it, my frustration on the, uh, maintenance issues, the long list that you have, uh, mentioned and then ones that have already been fixed, is last year in August, we were told, you know, uh, Jennifer mentioned to the past, uh, fire chief, that we had a maintenance bond and it was gonna be, it was gonna expire at that, that, at that time. If there's anything that need to be fixed, we need to address it at that time, but we were told, everything's good, you know, and then we come out with this big list. Me as a taxpayer, uh, you know, kinda, you know, you threw out seventy-eight thousand, I think it's up to, for all the repairs? That sound like a good number?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're at twenty-four thousand two hundred right now spent. Um, but it, with the exhaust system, which is not a maintenance issue as much as.
That's a forty thousand dollar.
That was a, a poor planning.
Right.
Deal, so.
But you can understand my frustration.
I'm just as frustrated, Director, uh, President Carr, I'm just as, I'm just as frustrated, I mean, I just got here two months ago, really, if you think about me, and, and the very first meeting I had, May second, that I could with, with, with the firefighters, I even made a comment about a leaky ceiling in a firehouse before and they all started laughing, I said, so we have a leaky roof here and I got to just wait and all these other issues came up, it wasn't that we went out looking for them. Uh, I'm, I'm just trying to fine tune what we have and everything was kinda, the electrical we found out was tied to the air conditioners, which were all tied and it was, you know.
Well, they, they were putting buckets underneath lines.
I know.
You know, I went up in the attic and they had buckets and it's like, usually that's the first clue, there's something wrong.
I know.
You know, when you're putting buckets.
And, and, and I'll say this, there, there was, a- and, and, and the firefighters, they know, um, I, I've talked to them before that every one of those captains knows if there's anything that goes wrong in the firehouse, it's their fault. They're in charge of that firehouse, and if they wanna go after the guys, they can, but the guys know that some of this is on their hands as well, I mean, you know, from the telephone system that, you know, I think a lot of people just got frustrated, threw their arms up and just, you know, I, I can't really explain it, other than we're just trying to get it taken care of, you know.
And I, I wanna make a comment that you can day-to-day see great improvements over there and I wanna say I appreciate that. Um, I do wanna say back on the A C thing, is I, please do look into that, because I don't want us to replace what we had with something that's not gonna be of a long-term value. And we, if we save a couple of hundred bucks in the beginning, but we find out that it really wasn't meant for that application, it may not be the value in the long run, so please look into that and just make sure, but for the, for the board's benefit, I do wanna say that you really do, on a day-to-day basis, you see great improvements over there, every single day, so I, I appreciate that.
And the, and the, I'm gonna tell you, the firefighters are just, they are really, they're doing great things there, they truly are.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's nice and I appreciate, as Jennifer said, for them to go around and fix things on their own, rather than the expense of calling a contractor and it's gonna charge a lot more. But, um, with that last meeting, we talked to Chief Arada about, you know, has a maintenance report been implemented as far as, okay, there's an issue that's found, a report is, uh, generate a work order per se? And then someone make sure it gets filed through, has that been implemented?
There's no work order, the order is that i- if anyone notices anything, uh, there's two ways that they've been, they've been, it's been, it's been told to the firefighters, one is if it's an emergency, they need to contact, you know, they need to make, their captain knows who to call, um, and that's Captain Gary Sykes. He's in charge of the building, I gave him the building, he's the one that, I don't, what we don't want is a bunch of different people doing different things. So anytime if it's an emergency, like when he came in and it just, lucky enough that you were in your budget meeting, I was able to grab Jennifer and say, we got a problem with the air conditioner. Other than that, it would be a phone call. The minor things, they're supposed to generate an email that goes right to, to Captain Sykes. What you're gonna see in the future is an organizational chart, when I get to the other two captains, where every firefighter is gonna look and go, if I have a problem with our ladders, this who's in charge of ladders. Sean Garrett is, has the responsibility of everything inside the firehouse and Kalu Evans outside, so people have a person they can go to, and I've told them, just word of mouth doesn't make it, you've gotta generate an email and it's gonna be received, they're creating their own files, their own folders, now that they really never had before, um, a lot of stuff is kinda sporadic, they, they've created a whole file on the air conditioning system, one on the roof and so on and so forth, uh, electrical and that, so we can actually track stuff too, instead of trying to find, whether it's just emails or whatever, so, so there's not an actual work order, but the order has been given to them that when they need something to address, it is to go to, uh, Captain Sykes and then he'll decipher whether it's inside, outside, and if it's an emergency, we're gonna take care of it.
Yeah, I understood from Chief Arada, and I'll go back and watch the tape, but he was saying that there was gonna be some sort of maintenance process where it's reported, it, the, when it's completed, it's bought off, someone checks it, and Gary was here and he said, he did say he took over the maintenance part of it, so. Okay, do you wanna go on to the uniform, uh, sorry, Mr. Rose?
Chief, uh, had the pleasure of touring the facility a little over a week ago. And, uh, I wanna say that I was favorably impressed with, uh, the firefighters, the attitude and all the work they're doing. I was especially impressed that, uh, they took on the job of changing out faucets in the kitchen. I mean, that's, plumbing is a little bit different issue, something that I might do, but certainly nothing that I would expect anybody in a fire department to do. So thank you, and thank them all for all the work.
One, one of the things that, that is overlooked quite often is, um, uh, firefighters in, in general, in general, North America are very, are very talented, there are a lot of them are in the trades. You know, I, I used to, I, I said it's like having mill rights working for you that can do everything at a factory. Um, we don't have that many, but you usually can find someone who's proficient, you know, Captain Sykes has his own landscaping business. So there's someone there that, you know, has the background there, so, you know, it's, it's nice to find when there's guys that go, chief, I can do this, if you'll just let me, I'm like, let you, that means we don't have to hire, you know, for some of these things, we don't have to, if we don't have to hire someone and we can take care of it, that saves the taxpayers, saves everybody money, you know, that's more money that you can use for other things than us just, you know, there's certain things like air conditioning, we're not gonna, you know, tackle, but there's a lot of other things that we can, we can take care of, so thank you.
And as you said, I mean, it's their house, their home. And for the time they're on a shift and if something's broken and they have the ability, I mean, you go ahead and fix it. And stuff, so I appreciate that, that, uh, part, do you wanna go into uniforms now or?
Okay, uniform, uniforms and, and P P E, I think is what we wanna talk about. Uh, the uniforms, uh, and actually I have, uh, Engineer Hards, Dustin, sitting here, who is in charge of our class A, B and C uniforms, class A are their dress uniforms, that you'll see on, on September eleventh. Class B is what you see him wearing now and class C would be the apparel they wear when they work out. Uh, he's got everything, as for the class C, the, the workout apparel is all ordered. The class B uniforms, unfortunately, we had some members with uniforms that were ten years old. Uh, that has all been addressed, the captains didn't have their insignia embroidered on their, the pel, everything's been addressed. Dustin, about half's in right now. We're, about half the order is in, so some guys got their pants, while they're still waiting on their shirts, but it's all underway, so the class B uniforms are gonna look a, a lot better, they're gonna have, uh, four, uh, that'll be frontline uniforms, I'm gonna look to them. We were discussing today to, to pick through their older stuff and pick one spare to, to, I haven't decided, and the spare is not to be worn like routinely, it's if they're gonna do some painting or something where they're gonna risk ruining, those are nomex fire retardant uniforms they wear, they're expen- you know, that, they could go and put that on and if you're gonna wreck something, wreck something old. Um, so that'll take care of that with the uniforms. The other thing that you're gonna see happen is we're gonna have a biannual inspection. Uh, right now, the turnout gear has to be inspected, has to be maintained, uh, the protective clothing, uh, in the past, there's never really been anything for that, so uh, what we're going to implement, you'll see a policy on this as well, is a biannual inspection, usually spring and fall, uh, where the captains will meet with each firefighter, the firefighter will have to show them all four of those shirts hanging, that they're in good shape, they're not stained, there's no holes, you know, sometimes leaning against batteries or whatever, accidents. Their pants, boots, belts are all in good shape, their, if they wear their, their, their ball caps, their T-shirts, they're, there's a certain amount that Dustin and I were, we came to that they're gonna have to show that are presentable, twice a year, and that's gonna kill off a lot of old or stuff that may not look right, when you do it twice a year, we can, we can, we can nail that down a little bit easier. The other thing that's gonna happen with that during those two inspections, their class A uniforms, their dress uniforms are gonna be inspected as well, right now, they're all over the place, I have captains that are wearing lieutenant's insignia for like two, three years, they've never wore the right stuff. People don't have their service marks, things like that, and those are relatively minor, not real expensive to take care of, they just weren't. Uh, what's gonna happen is twice a year, not only are they gonna have to show those, they're gonna have to put those on. Cause those you don't wear, you wear for funerals, memorials, presentations, so on and so forth. Sometimes, you know, one may, uh, not fit as well anymore, so twice a year they're gonna have to show that. Those two inspections, I promise you, I know for a fact, are gonna take care of all that. I mean, you're not gonna see us falling behind with uniforms, because twice a year, they're gonna have to show that they have something presentable, okay? Turnout gear wise, um, everyone was measured, uh, the second set of turnout gear has been ordered. One of the examples I used was when we had the two fires, when you came, when they came back and it's all full of soot, all the carcinogens that, you know, uh, you know, are harmful to firefighters. For years, uh, it just wasn't taken care of, I've been saying for twenty-five years, when my mentors used to say, to wash those nomex hoods all the time, and now we had the science to prove how much cancer it's causing the fire service. They've even created programs called Wash Your Hood Sunday, cause you're wearing the scarf around your neck that's full of carcinogens, that's into your blood system, and now they've got the proof. So now with the second set of gear, for example, that night, when they come back, they could take that set of gear, that's all loaded with that, the washer extractor, I don't know if you're familiar, we have two washers down there. We have a regular washer, regular closer, we have a washer extractor that we are supposed to have. That washer extracts any of the carcinogens, same thing with their uniforms, um, wanna gross anybody off, they went to a, a pretty bad trauma call, an accident, end up kneeling in some bloodborne pathogens or whatever, whatever it was. That extracts it from that too, that washer is designed, it's not a dryer, it wa- it's designed to pull that from it. Now with a second set of gear, anytime they get any bloodborne pathogens on it, uh, where it's contaminated at all, they can put their second set on and wear that, so the second set of gear, I think I sent everybody an email, that was just, it's one thing to fix the firehouse, another thing, that's absolutely incredible. Um, a lot of other departments have been doing it for a long time, cause the standard calls for, for that. That was just, uh, that was a message from this board to, to all, all the, uh, firefighters wearing a uniform, that someone cares about it, because I know you're passionate about it, Jennifer, about the two sets of gear, it's huge.
Again, last year, same, same meeting is the maintenance issue. The budget was twenty thou- or fourteen thousand, the same chief came and said, we need another twenty, so everyone has two sets of gears. We said, no problem, look at it, and now you come back and ne- another year and say, we need two sets of gear, it's like, what happened to that thirty-four thousand?
Nobody, nobody had two sets of gear, and again, I can't speak on behalf of someone who's not here, but the information I've been able to, and there's three sides to every story, unfortunately, their side, this side and the truth, is, um, you know, there was a decision made supposedly that not everybody needed a second set, I don't know why.
Okay.
Everybody should have a second set.
I just wanna know where the thirty-four thousand that was supposed to go for two sets of gear.
All the gear that was bought is on the spreadsheet you have in front of you, uh, the fifteen firefighters have, they each have their own set of gear. The three volunteers have their own set of gear, the six spares, and I just learned something tonight, that's, it's extremely disturbing to me when it comes to turnout gear. The fifteen, three and six, we have six part-time firefighters that were part-time shifts there. When they come in to work a part-time shift, they don't have a set of gear, they have a helmet they have to wear. And then they have to go and there's, there's a, they have to pick from the spare sets of gear, what fits and what doesn't fit. Cause I was curious why there were locks on certain lockers there and I had firefighters tell me, well, some of the part-timers come in and borrow their stuff and they'll put it back. What would happen is someone would say, well, I can wear Dustin's gear, he's my size, I'm not gonna piece him, I'll wear his gear, which is totally wrong. The part-timers, if we're even a part-timer, each one should have their own set of gear. So the spares, they've just kind of, there's a helmet, I think they have a helmet that they use and then they have to pick all their, all their gear. I just, I just learned that tonight from one of my captains, I said, he goes, chief, that wasn't my decision. Again, uh, not a good practice, um, the three volunteers have their own set of gear, the six part-timers need to have their own set of gear. Volunteers are not bound by the same standard, the ten-year limit that the career firefighters are. But with us just having three volunteers and they're, they're pretty good volunteers, you know, not that that matters, they deserve just as good as gear as anybody else, they fight fires right next to everybody else, so that's why two of them were issued new gear last year. The, so you've got the six sets, there's two sets that were, the sizing was done wrong, um, that we have a credit for. The reason we held off ordering that particular set right now is because the fire chief doesn't have a set, have a helmet, but no set. Not for me, but for whoever is your next fire chief, it needs to be in there for them. That leaves one set and I, and I'm, I'm almost tempted for us to look, well, I'd like to see if we can assign our part-timers each their own set, if we can't do that, I'm just gonna take a shot and go, maybe the pants and coat from this one last spare set will, will get our part-timers to have their own gear. So this is all, any of the other turnout gear we have is beyond the limit. The new set of gear coming in will go to the. The new set of gear coming in will go to the 15 career firefighters and the current set that you have in front of you will become their second set. And then every year, there's gonna be a smaller rotation. What's gonna happen is every year, um, we're looking at three to four to buy, which means it'll knock a, a set of gear out of one of the, two of the current career firefighters that we're in, which is gonna give us more gear for the part-timers to wear to get us by because as great as the part-timers are, they're not there every day or, or whatever, you, you know what I'm saying? So, um, there's some long-range plans in there rather than try to do everything. I just, I just, I didn't know, I'll be honest with you, I hadn't, I, you know.
Again, I mean.
It's being fixed.
It's all in the past going forward, but, you know, it frustrates you when, you know, you took, you thought as a mudboard, everyone was taken care of and then you come on board and start digging down and find out, hey, this didn't happen. And I'm believer, if you have, you know, the fire protective gear, it needs to fit. You can't have baggy pants or loose jacket because that's where the heat comes in.
You can't, you can't wear the wrong stuff, the wrong, it should be sized properly for you. If yours is dirty, you should be wearing someone else's. The mandatory inspections, when those go out for inspection repair, you can't, you're not supposed to wear someone else's. You should be able to open up a bag, put your spare set on. We grow some life out of it too because now we have two sets. And like I said, if you look at the oldest set of gear they're gonna have will probably be eight years out of the two, which gets us two years under the 10. Those last two years, even though I'm not a big fan of that, but they tried to stretch it 10 years, that's where the gear you're gonna see us with a little bit more for our part-time staff. So, they're not, I, I, I guess said, they come in to work a shift, they have to pick spare sets of gear, that's just not, that's just not good business.
Uh, thank you very much for the updates. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I, one, just wanna apologize for being late, uh, thinking about different meeting. Uh, two, also wanna thank, uh, Chief Lasky for spending a couple hours walking through, uh, just generically about fire and, and how things, uh, work and his vast experience in the, uh, in the fire world and just taking your time to, uh, educate someone who doesn't know a whole lot about fire. Haven't ever been involved in a fire, thank God and I pray that I never am. One of the things that, um, I found out, um, when we were accountable, he gave us a quick tour of the facility was, um, that in the fireman's room that they buy cable. Uh, they, if they want a box in their room, uh, they pay cable. And, uh, and I don't know what standard in the industry. Uh, I definitely won't claim to know that, I'm sure the chief knows that better than I do. But I know I never take my fee for being in the meetings and so, uh, and I know I can't speak for anybody else's financial situation. I know I've been blessed financially and so, I'd be willing to forego whatever my fee is for each meeting to go toward the firemen to pay, uh, one of their cable bills. I know that they, uh, they don't watch TV between nine and five, but when they, uh, in the evenings, when they wanna just sit back and relax, uh, it'd be great to be able to go back and not have to take money from home, pay for a fire bill at home plus one at the fire station to watch TV in your room. So, I'd like to make a motion, if there are any other directors like to join me, to, uh, forego whatever fee we get for attending meetings to pay for one of the firemen's, uh, uh, cable bill in their, uh, sleeping quarters.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, there's no item here to make a motion on, on that? And if he wants to do that on his own, he can do that on his own, is that correct?
Is there something that prevents me from making a motion?
Kinda two, two things, this, um, the agenda, the way it's written is that this'll just be a report item.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But depending on what the intention is in the future, if it applies to himself, obviously he could donate his money. If it's something that'll be a policy to all directors, it should be an action item on your, your board agenda.
Any other questions for the fire chief?
I, I have a couple more things if I could, Mr. President.
Sure.
You know, the timing was perfect, actually, for the two board members to be there because we had a storm come through. We had lightning strikes and everything else go on and actually got to see how quick the guys turn out. We're addressing response times, I, I've already, we've already picked that apart, it's not, we've gotta be better at how we report and how we do our things. I think you can see it, I've been timing them, I've actually been timing a stopwatch and sometimes they're out the door at the ambulance before the dispatch center's even talking, I can hear them, they, they pull out. Uh, so I know how fast they're getting out the door, so everything worked out very nice that day. Um, last couple issues if I could, um, uh, just so you're aware, the, uh, Trophy Club Emergency Volunteer Corps uh, finally received their 501(c)(3), so when you see them out in the community doing things now, they finally got that taken care of there. Pam, the president, was very excited about that. Um, one of the Dallas police officers that lost his life during, uh, uh, the attack, Ross Perot, uh, flew his body and his family home in his personal plane to, uh, Michigan from Alliance Airport. And, uh, Chief Arata was one of the folks that arranged, uh, for fire police vehicles to line the runway, um, out of respect. And, uh, we had, uh, uh, two of our volunteers and one of our captains take the, our ladder truck out there so we didn't take an engine out of service. Very proud moment, uh, where we were able to show our respect for one of the police officers that was lost in Dallas. Um, you'll also notice, and I, I sent Ms. McKnight this as well, with the exception of the unmarked chief's car, uh, all the other vehicles have a blue stripe over the logo on the sides and the animals on the back in support of our, our police officers. Tonight, another, uh, police, our Kansas City police officer was, was murdered, um, in a shootout, um, just before getting here, I sent that to Chief Arata. Uh, we saw what happened in Baton Rouge, our flags, by the way, were supposed to go up today for France. They're gonna be, they're gonna be down until the 22nd, uh, the presidential proclamation came out for that. Um, so, uh, we're doing whatever we can. I know some of the shifts has had some of the police officers over for dinner to show their appreciation. It's a very, as you know, a very difficult time for them, uh, to go to work. I was a police officer, I can't imagine, I got shot in a police station. I can't imagine being out there worrying about whoever you're pulling over and everything else, so, uh, uh, you'll see that, if you see why, you see the blue stripes on the rigs, that's why. And very proud of the guys stepping up and supporting their, their family on the law enforcement side.
You mentioned response time, real quick, it took a bump upward in this past month, was there any reason for that or?
You know, we're getting to the bottom of it, how we're reporting the calls, they need to break it out where it should show EMS emergency response time. It shows, so, fire emergency response time and non-emergency calls. What happens when you lump it all into one, for the non-emergency lockouts, the rest of the calls, when they leave and they have to drive 18 minutes to the other end or whatever, without red lights and sirens, that adds to the time. There's some other, uh, ways that we've been reporting calls, I'd be happy to explain to you, uh, you know, another timeless, you wanna explain now that, you know, they, there's three different orders as to everything from adding time for a walk-in. If I pull up on a call, if I pull, if an accident occurs in front of me, I get my radio and call, that's the calls received, we're en route on the scene is all the same time. And it depends on who you talk to and the orders they receive was, that's a policy, you have to add time to it, which, that you don't have to add time. So, there's a lot of things, we're gonna have a staff meeting coming up, uh, within two weeks with the captains and we're gonna, we're gonna take care of the reporting on the response times as well.
Okay, thank you very much, anything else you have?
No, sir, that's it.
Any other, any other directors have any questions? Okay, thank you very much, thank you for the firefighters.
I do wanna add one thing to the fire operations report. The, um, the Terry's group has put together, um, I guess Thursday, that TCDRS will be here to talk to the firefighters about the difference in the, the systems. Um, it's voluntary, the, they don't have to go. But, um, I wanna say thank you to Terry for getting that set up for them. And she'll have some information about all the benefits that we have.
That was per your request, wasn't it, to have someone?
I think, I think you'll see a lot of them. If, if there's someone that's gonna be out of town on vacation, I told them, "Make sure you have a representative that can ask questions for you." Um, if it's, or you're out of town, you can't change plane tickets or whatever. I said, "If you're not gonna be there, make sure you have a captain or someone that can ask questions so you don't, you know, walk away."
This is actually the second time they showed up, I, I don't think you were aware that they were up here before, you know, so. Okay, anything else, Jennifer?
No, that's all.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the board of directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be, uh, considered separately. Uh, agenda item two, consider and take appropriate action to approve the consent agenda. A, June 2016 check register. B, June 21st, 2016 regular meeting minutes. C, June 29th, 2016 special meeting minutes. D, quarterly investment report, third quarter, fiscal year 2016. E, cash needs report. F, tax collection report, third quarter, fiscal year 2016. G, inter-cooperation agreement for shared governance, communication, and dispatch services systems with Denton County. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President?
For removal for one.
I need to remove item G, please.
Okay, item G?
Yes.
As in golf?
Yep.
Okay, inter-cooperation agreement for shared governance, communication, and dispatch services system and with Denton County. Any other one?
Yes, I'd like A to remove.
Okay, A and G are gonna be removed. Do I have a motion for B, C, D, E, and F?
I move to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda, items B through F with the June 21st, 2016 regular minutes as amended at the dais.
Okay, so B as in boy, correct?
Correct.
Through F as in foxtrot? Correct?
Alpha and foxtrot, correct.
Well, it's not alpha.
Alpha.
Alpha was removed.
So, Bravo through foxtrot.
Okay, got it, just to make sure, okay. We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Director Rose, a second by Director Hayes, show hands. Okay, unanimous.
That would be all in favor.
Excuse me?
That would be all in favor.
Right, unanimous. Okay, A, do you wanna return to A, Mr. Hayes?
Yes. On page 27 of your attachments, there's a check number 2008 for a million, 164,679 dollars to Weber and Kadagwa.
Kadagwa?
Kadagwa.
Kadagwa, okay. I wanna say a few words about that check.
Okay, that's on page, uh.
27.
27.
Okay, what I wanna say about it is, is that, uh, I wanna give you a report on how much of the authorized bonds we have spent so far. If you remember, the tax-based bonds were 5.7 million and the revenue bonds were 9.2 million, for a total of 15 million. We started out on the payment process using, uh, some of the revenue bonds. We've now switched over and we're gonna pay out of tax bonds until that 5.7 is gone, is that right, Jennifer?
That's just the opposite.
Oh, just the, it's the opposite. Okay, the opposite, we're gonna pay out of the revenue bonds. Okay, so the situation on the two bond issues. The tax bonds, 5.7, we've spent 4.4 of that. And the revenue bonds were 9.2 and we've spent 4.5. So, we've spent 76% of the tax bonds and 37% of the revenue bonds. The total of the two, which is 14,995, we've spent 8,870,000, which is 59%. I wanna word, add a word of caution here. It doesn't mean the percent complete on the project is 59%. Cause a lot of those payments were materials and, uh, cranes and that sort of thing. And doesn't, they don't, they're more in the material area than they are in the labor area. Uh, so, uh, I think the latest information I have is that phase one of the project, which is the conclusion of the phase that allows us to have additional processing capacity is now sitting in November of 2016. The entire project is sitting at 20, November of 2017. Now, Carl is anxious to tell me that these dates change from time to time. And so, uh, it's, when you're looking out almost a year and a half, there are probably some changes in that time period.
Jim, did you say that the phase one now is November of 2016?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, originally, before we ran into some delays, that was May of 2016. We ran into some delays. I'll, I'll just leave it at that. And it's now moved back to November of 16. And so, you really won't have additional capacity until you reach that conclusion in phase one.
Okay, does that, anyone have any other questions?
I have a, I have a, as you talk about this, I have a question on what was in the packet. There's a, in, toward the back of the packet, there's the timeline for,
I, I tell you the truth, I didn't read.
Let's, let's do that later.
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's, uh, get rid of A and we'll come back to G, is that okay? Okay, do you have a motion for, uh, A?
Yes, I'd make a motion that we, uh, approve the expenditure.
The check register.
Covered by, uh, page 27, check 2008.
Okay.
And the rest, and I make a motion, we approve the rest of the checks that were written.
Can you just simplify that? To approve June 2016 check register, can you, do you mind saying that?
Yes, prove, I make a motion to approve the 2016 check register.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the June 2016 check register, do I have a second? I'll second it. Okay, there's a motion by, uh, Director Hayes, a second by, uh, Director Carr. All in favor, show of hands? Okay, unanimous? Okay, now we'll move on to consent agenda G.
President Carr, could I say something, please?
Sure.
Please. Okay, um, Jim, you were talking about the tax bonds. The amount that's been spent on the tax bonds was a million and 74,000 dollars. And that was to reimburse expenses that we had paid upfront. The balance, the balance in the tax bond, bond now is for 4.3, almost 4.4. So, it was just a reverse, we had not spent 4 million, we had spent 1 million.
Okay, thank you for that correction.
Okay, sounds a lot better.
Thank you, Renee. Okay, we're on, uh, 2G as in golf. Mr. Rose, you asked for that?
Okay, looking at, uh, golf, one of the questions I had was if the, uh, if the document had been completed, and the reason I ask that question is if you go to page 70 in the document, a payment method is not selected and it says, "Agency must select one payment option."
Annual, two payments, four payments? Anyone, staff, do you have a comment on that?
We usually pay it in one payment.
So, you're gonna check that box?
Well, this is provided to us from the fire department.
It's not due till like October.
But you're good, we're approving the document, as I understand it. And so, I was kinda anticipated that the blank spots would be filled in.
Well, make a motion to use one annual payment.
Right.
Do you wanna make that motion?
I'm not sure that there aren't other blank spots left open in it. I just noticed that one.
Well, if you all would like, I don't know, is this critical that this be approved this month, Chief Lasky, or is this something that can wait till next month?
Needs to be approved, I got a call from Denton County.
Right above that, there's a co-, payment contact person section that's blank.
Well, the total amount due is blank too.
If you look at the page, um, page 69 in yellow, it says the amount for Trophy Club Fire Department is 4,752 dollars.
And I think you're looking at the invoice and we're approving the agreement.
And the town pays half of that. I billed the town for half of it.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Okay, I'm gonna move to approve item G with the selection of one annual payment.
Okay, I have a motion, do I, by Director Rose, do I have a second? I'll second that. Okay, all in favor, show of hands? Okay, unanimous? Okay, we'll go on, move into regular session. Okay, uh, three, consider and take appropriate action regarding 2015 consumer confidence report. Staff?
Um, this is, um, just our annual time for if any residence has any- just our annual time for if any residence has any questions about our consumer confidence report. We did not have any violations. Good job, Mike and the guys again. Um, and, um, the only thing really to add about that, we, the, we did have a few calls, but it was not regarding our CCR. There were some, uh, residents in Trophy Club that actually received, uh, Rowan Oaks CCR. So we did get calls about that, concerns, but once we figured out that it was not our CCR that they were concerned about, we were all good. But, um, we have no violations, so there's really nothing to add on that.
Do we need any motion on this, or?
No.
Okay, just staff. Okay, moving, does anyone have any questions? None? Okay, moving on. Uh, four, consider and take appropriate action regarding draft design of nine eleven memorial for the fire station. We have, uh, Councilmember Perro here.
Mr. President, Jim Perro, Eight Brook Field Court, Trophy Club, Texas. Uh, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, uh, Directors and Madam Manager. Uh, just wanted to, uh, discuss with you, I believe you have a copy of a nine eleven memorial that was prepared by Teague, Knoll and Perkins. Uh, Tom Rutledge, uh, has been working with me on putting this together. Uh, it's a multi-view illustration showing the front, the side and an isometric as well as an overhead view. Uh, this particular recommendation will be four feet ten inches wide, three feet five inches deep. And when the artifact is attached as, uh, intended, it'll be six feet nine inches tall. The overhead view shows it'll be located four feet four inches from the existing bench and four feet four inches from the existing curb. There'll also be two flush-mounted LED lights uh, intended to illuminate the artifact at the same time that the fire station is illuminated. Uh, it's Teague, Knoll and Perkins's plan and Steely Freeman's plan to hook up the LED lighting system to the existing firehouse lighting system, so when those lights come on, so will these, uh, in the ground lights. Also, the illustration colors are not actually accurate. The colors of the memorial proposed would be to match the firehouse. The flagstone, the capstone and the brick would all be identical to what's in the existing firehouse. So that gray color really wouldn't be there unless you wanted gray for some reason. They could certainly make whatever color stone you would like. But the intended plan was to match the firehouse. And, uh, um, on top of that, you should also have an illustration of a plaque uh, that, uh, was put together, uh, by, uh, a local company to, uh, represent the thoughts of the firefighters and the citizens of Trophy Club, uh, regarding this particular piece and the dedication to all those who perished in the attacks of nine eleven. And, uh, it shows the Pentagon-shaped logo for nine eleven oh one, which represents, uh, the attack on New York, the attack on the Pentagon and the Flight ninety-three site in Shawshank, uh, Pennsylvania, in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. And then below that, you'll see a, uh, little illustration of a, of a endless summer plaque. And the reason that's there is to show you the border, which has a multi-rod attachment, uh, with wrappings around it. That same, uh, type of, of, uh, design uh, is in the House of Representatives on both sides of the Speaker's podium. It's also on the two front arms of the seat in which President Lincoln is sitting in the Lincoln Memorial. And it's, uh, my, my understanding is it's intended to show a bond of unity uh, between, uh, uh, individuals and nations and countries and states and so on and so forth. And so we're recommending that we use that border instead of the plain border shown in the illustration you're looking at to convey that image of unity with those who lost their lives, the families of those who lost their lives and the nation as a whole and the community with the nation. So that's the recommendation that Steely Freeman and Teague Knoll Perkins and I are presenting to you tonight for your consideration and hopefully approval, so we can move forward.
When does it have to be approved?
Uh, as soon as possible. They have to order materials, they have to sit down and draft drawings and make up the design based on this illustration. And they plan on coming out and starting construction, uh, the second or third week in August. Uh, so that'll be ready for the nine eleven unveiling that morning.
And all the funding is in place?
Uh, all the, it's taken care of. Uh, there's no need, there's no cost to the mud. Uh, and again, I'm here, even though I'm a council member, I am not here as a council member. I'm here as a resident and a born and raised New Yorker who has a personal tie to the nine eleven, uh, memorial and the Twin Towers in New York that I spent many, many days at when I was growing up. And I, uh, I hope that you'll, you'll see this as a very positive, uh, design. Uh, you'll also notice there's a three, uh, tier capstone. And some have suggested that would represent New York, the Pentagon and Flight ninety-three uh, as well, uh, the three steps and the three locations. So there's a, a number of symbolisms involved here as well.
I notice nine eleven, eleven is the Twin Towers and stuff on the plaque. Very nice. Um, Chief, you've, have you been involved in the placement or of this project?
Yes, sir. Um, we, we, uh, we had a meeting, a couple of meetings over it. Um, uh, you know, this is a very, uh, obviously, I know you don't know me, very personal matter to me. I lost forty-one friends that day. Uh, I was there two days afterwards, um, people I was, uh, talking to the day before. Um, but I, I love the fact that we're gonna have something right here in Trophy Club as we did at my other department where the residents here can come and reflect and remember those that lost their lives and those that are still losing their lives due to cancer every day. Uh, that children are gonna be able to come here, you're gonna see school groups will hit, will make field trips. They'll sit and their teacher will explain things for, they weren't even around then. Um, but it's a beautiful memorial, uh, how it's set up. Um, uh, e- everything was considered. So many places we go, they remember the three forty-three with the New York City firefighters. They forget the twenty-three NYPD officers, thirty-nine Port Authority and everyone else. My friend Senator Birdwell from Granbury was Colonel Birdwell. The plane that hit the Pentagon was a direct hit in his office and killed his whole staff and burned him. He was supposed to die. Uh, they forget about that. They forget about Shanksville. So this one is very nice. It reflects all of it. It surrounds everybody. Um, uh, it, 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 we haven't forgotten anybody is, is where I'm going with that. It's gonna be very nice.
Any other staff updates on this project? Okay, uh, thank you very much for your report.
I, uh, I make a motion that we approve the draft design of the nine eleven memorial for the fire station.
I'll second it. There's a motion by Director Hayes, second by myself. In any discussion?
Would that include the plaque, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
I wanna thank Councilman Perro, Resident, Resident Perro, both for your leadership on this particular task.
It's my honor.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Show of hands for all in favor. Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much.
I will get the work started immediately. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we're at number five, consider and take appropriate action to approve a second amended interlocal cooperation agreement for fire protection services with the Talent Trophy Club to amend section three point oh one funding as outlined in the letter of agreement dated May second, twenty sixteen.
Okay, uh, just quickly, this is, um, has been on the agenda a few times. We just haven't really had time to, to get to it last month. Um, but what this is, Stephen and I had met about, we have, um, have had a long-term disagreement on what the existing ILA says as far as when payments are due. And so we were able to work through the issues that we had and came up with this agreement. Um, well, an amendment to the interlocal agreement. This is the, the agreement where the district provides fire service to the public improvement district, to the PID. And as it stands right now, the, the, the way the town interprets the agreement, we are only to receive payment of, of the monies that they've collected as of January thirty-first. This amendment allows us to get additional funds that were not collected by January thirty-first but are collected over time till the end of the fiscal year. So as it stands right now, the, the, we're about thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, we had, uh, the town had not collected as of January thirty-first. But I believe, um, Stephen said they were just within a couple of hundred dollars of having all of that. And it's been a month ago that we discussed this, but having all of it collected, so pretty much the rest of what's owed to us could then be paid over. And so going forward, this, this amendment would have them m- make payments to us for the funds that they collect on January thirty-first. Then anything that's not collected by January thirty-first, but by March thirty-first, they would pay. And then a payment date on June thirtieth and September thirtieth and every year going forward on those same dates. So staff recommends that this agreement be approved.
Okay, prior to making a motion, I'm, I'm gonna ask for discussion, so we don't have to make a motion amended and things of that nature, so. Does anybody have any issues on this? Mr. Rose?
On page, uh, eighty-three.
Okay.
Excuse me. When you get there, I, I have a question, uh, on the, uh, last sentence in D, which says, "The district also understands that similar to all tax collection processes, one hundred percent of amounts due under the fire protection ILA may not be collected. Thus, the district agrees that the town is not liable for the payment of funds ac- assessed, but not collected and remitted to the town." That particular sentence, I think, also belongs in E. Because in E says, "The town shall be responsible, pay and remit for out-of-district, out-of-PID properties identified as former gas well pad sites, pad sites, Coleman Welsh-inventable properties." If they can't collect from them those properties, then they are in the same situation that they would be with other properties. Therefore, I think the last sentence in D needs to be copied and placed after the first sentence in section E.
I do not, um, believe that they can collect for out-of-district properties. They can't collect that for them. They just have to pay it.
That's the same situation we have. We can't collect for out-of-district. Is that correct?
Well, the issue is that this, um, agreement is a, is related to an, an assessment that can be made on residents in a public improvement district. Those out-of-district properties are not in the public improvement district, so therefore they can't collect from them. The town is just paying that. Out of the other taxes, I guess, that they collect, they pay for those out-of-district. So if you put that they can't collect it, that they don't have to pay it, there's really no use in having anything in there because they can't collect a, a pit assessment on properties that are not located within the PID.
So if I understand what you're telling me is that the town cannot collect for, on these particular properties. And so the town is just going to pay for it, pay a percentage.
My understanding would be, yes, they would just have to pay for it out of taxes collected otherwise, through the general fund or however they collect them.
Okay, are we the first one to take action on this?
I don't know. Um, has the town, I thought, has the town taken action on this? Does anybody know?
Staff? I looked at staff.
There, do you have any comment on that?
I think they've said that they approved it. They all nodded their head, yes.
Uh, let's see, I've got, do I have a quorum?
Well, they, I saw them all do it.
No, yes? Okay, no comment.
They're, they're not here.
Comment. Okay, anything else?
So, okay, so my point would be at this point, if we approve this and it becomes an issue, then it can come back to us. If we approve it as currently written and it is an issue, the town can reject it and come back to it.
And the town has an issue with it, then it can come back.
As I understand it, the letter agreement contemplates that there'll be a subsequent formal amendment. That's what it provides. So there's gonna be another amendment that comes back to your board.
No, this, this is the amendment that came from that letter of agreement. This is it.
Okay, I take that back.
But if the town, it goes to the town and they have some changes, then it would come back to us. Is that correct?
Yeah, e- each entity will approve the document before them. If the other entity approves a different entity, then that would require the other entity to consider that one.
Okay.
But you have, in your discussions, this, this entire document was reviewed by the town manager, correct?
The town manager, yes, he, he drafted this, or the town drafted this and sent it to us.
Okay.
And actually, the, that is, the, I'm, I don't know if it's been approved. I don't have a signed copy. But I do know that the signatures at the end were still the previous, um, it was when Jim Ta- uh, I'm sorry, Jim Moss was president. And so I had to go in and, and change that. That was the only thing that I changed on what the town sent over to me. Was I changed the signature president and secretary treasurer.
The town attorney there would also require changing.
Yes, she's gone.
So I guess they can change that. I, but I don't know if they've approved this or not approved it.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, as a point of courtesy, I think we could change the town attorney's signature block before we sign it, otherwise it can come back.
And when the motion is made, you can make that request to put the proper names in there. Um, anything else, Mr. Rose?
No.
Okay, I had a couple, uh, things. It, in the assessed part where it says, uh, D, page eighty-three, which Mr. Rose, I think, there's some other part too where it said assessed and collected. And I thought we had problems with that wording before where you can assess something and collected is actually something different than assessed. Assessing is, everybody gets assessed. Collecting, you only collect so much.
I guess if I could make a comment, uh, I, to me, this was always kind of a weird comment, uh, a weird disagreement, uh, because I guess I've always reviewed, I've always viewed, if someone says and, then that means those both go together. And so where it says taxed and assessed, then if it's taxed and, and assessed, or if it's assessed and collected, then that's when the action would take place.
Go, go to page eighty-two, C.
Eighty-two, C?
And that's where it says, "The town shall pay to the district funds assessed and collected." So it's really what's assessed and then you, and collected in addition to that. But if you change the wording that says, "The town shall pay to the district," uh, you know, assessed funds that are collected. Yes, no, anyone?
Legal.
I mean, that further clarifies it.
Jennifer?
I believe it first has to be assessed before it will be collected.
Right.
So I think that it should be assessed and collected.
It should read assessed. It, what about the town shall pay to the district, uh, funds or assessed funds that are collected?
Sure, it can be changed that way.
Okay. Can you make a note of that? And then?
I guess the question, that by making that change, that council is going to reconsider the, the amendment?
We don't even know if they approved it.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, they, they nodded yes.
I saw one no, yes, then that's all.
They, they all nodded yes.
They did? Okay, well, if they were okay with that, then that's fine. But you have, that answers your question then, Mr. Rose. Right, okay, you're okay with that?
Well, my, my question at this point is, it has been approved. I don't have a copy of it. And so I don't know if there were any changes within the document. So the document I have may not match the document that they have approved.
This is what the town gave us, is that correct?
Yes, this is the agreement that the town sent to us. The only changes that I made was I did change the signatures for our directors.
Okay, and that leads me to the signatures. My middle initials are.
So i- if they approved it, I don't know if, at that time, the town attorney was Patricia. I don't know when it was approved.
Well, but we can approve it with the change of the current town attorney. Okay, I'll, anyone else have any discussion on this document? Any motion? Do you have a motion?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable approving the document because they have approved the document and I don't have it. I mean, I'm, you can make the assumption that it's the same document that we have here and doesn't have any changes.
If you approve it and it's something different, uh, we have council member.
Yeah, Philip Schaffner, seventeen, Edgemere.
Philip Schoffner, seventeen, Edgemere. There's two changes in it, so you probably should see our document.
Okay, so this isn't the latest document then?
So will that be sent over to us?
This is something that came before you, two or three meetings ago, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And those two changes were on there, because that's when I came up to you and said that one of those changes was not correct. That's where the budget, one was the clarification, the map, that, of those properties. And the second was talking about, it said the entity that approves the budget, and it didn't clarify. And so Patricia clarified that as to be the town, and you said it was not, and so we had made that mistake. So you actually should have had that document, because we talked about it. So I think you may have that.
Okay, I don't think so, but I'll look. I remember you saying that you liked the map that I created better. I do remember that.
Right, yeah.
But at that time, I didn't have it.
Okay, so it's, it must be somewhere.
So it's probably somewhere in transition.
Yeah.
So.
Is the, is the timing on, I'm at the point of moving to table. This is where I'm at.
What's the timing on it?
We, is there a timeline on this?
No.
I moved to table this until we get the correct document.
I'll second. So we have a motion, is that a motion to table?
That's a motion to table until we have a correct one.
Motion table by Director Rose, second by myself. All in favor to table this item? Okay, unanimous. Okay, six. Consider and take appropriate action to approve task order master contract number twenty-sixteen zero-seven one-nine zero-one for engineering services with CPNY Inc. Staff?
Okay, what this is, we have a master agreement with our engineer, and then anytime we need services, they bring forward a proposal or task order. And the last agreement that we have was with the Wallace Group, and now they've merged with CPNY. So this is just kind of a paperwork cleanup to change the master agreement with CPNY.
Motion?
I have a question. So does it basically just take all the terms and put it on a different letterhead?
Yeah. Kiven, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, basically, with the Wallace Group, we had smaller companies, so we could do things different. This is a, with the CPNY, it's just a master agreement. It changes everything else from the Wallace Group to the CPNY. And then anytime a project comes up, then under specific task order, will be given to that with a different accounting number. And then it will have to come back to the board for approval of that task order with the scope of work before any work is accomplished or move forward.
I guess one final question, it'd probably be for the attorney. Isn't name change just normally accomplished via the notice procedure, which you normally?
It would somewhat depend on what the corporate transaction one, was it assignment of assets, was it a merger, depending on that?
Basically, CPNY bought the Wallace Group.
Bought the stock or bought the asset?
Now, that you're getting into, I'm not sure, of course, about that. Because before, the Wallace Group was a private entity, okay? CPNY is a corporation, I think, so they bought the whole. I guess they would say, you'd say they bought the stock.
Okay.
I don't know that, because I'm not, I'm not an attorney and I'm not.
Depending on how they accomplish their corporate transaction, the agreement may or may not have been assigned. By entering into a new one, you can eliminate the issue.
And that's just, more or less of what it is, is that with the Wallace Group, you gave me a project, and you'll, you know, we have several projects. Some are small, some are small. I just sign a project number, send it to it there, and it's taken care of. With the larger company, we can't do that. So I have to, a task order by task, we'll have one large accounting number, and all this stuff is charged to it, but then the task orders will be a point oh-one, point oh-two. So it's basically the same thing, it's just a one accounting process.
Yeah, and I guess my only concern is just making sure that, that everything transferred over, that there weren't any changes to the agreement.
No, no, you know, we're gonna be still, we're gonna still do the best job we can.
No, no, not, not if there was any changes to the quality of work, but the contractual terms and conditions.
You're still stuck with me.
Yeah, is there a motion?
I have, I don't know whether you want to make a motion or not. I do have some more discussion items, so go ahead with the motion.
Let's get a motion on table first, okay, please? Is there a motion? Because I'm gonna make the motions here tonight. I make a motion that we approve a task order master contract twenty-sixteen zero-seven one-nine zero-one for engineering services with CPNY Inc. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I made the motion, Vice President Wilson seconded it. Okay, we have discussion. Director Rose?
In, I'm on page one-thirty, C two-zero-four, excuse me. Serving as a witness, the pay rate is one point seven-five times a witness's standard hourly rate, the witness's standard hourly rate. That looks to me to be a little bit generous. On page, let me go to, well, the other question I had is had legal reviewed the document and what comments they had, right up front?
Yes, Pam did review this, and she did not provide any comments.
Okay. Then the next question I has is who has the authority to execute task orders and up to what amount?
All task orders are brought before the board. Well, the, I do have, the general manager has the authority to issue task orders for things like review of development plans. But in the purchasing policy, I have the authority to expend up to twenty thousand before it's brought before the board.
Okay, then on page one-forty-one. Has limits of liability. I wanted to make sure that those were adequate. One-forty-one's the page number?
Mine is insurance limit.
Yeah.
Is that your required, do you know anything about the insurance policy for liability?
I'm sorry, no.
Are you familiar with the workman's comp liability insurance?
These are.
Those are minimum or not, they look more than minimum.
Those are the values that our insurance has and the amount, and it came from our financial department and the standard rate, standard.
These are pretty standard in the industry, in connection with any individual task order, if because of the nature of the project, you wanted to increase the amount of coverage, you could always do so through the task order process.
Thank you.
Anything else?
And on page one-forty-one.
One-forty-one?
Yep.
Same page, okay.
Yeah.
One-forty, I'm sorry, one-forty-four.
Okay.
Picked up the statement down there at the bottom, which says, "Such uninsured owners' claims shall not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars." That's a limitation on the engineer's liability.
I'm sorry, what was it, on one-forty?
One-forty-four.
Which number, Bill, I'm sorry.
That's number, number one.
Okay, yeah, I see now.
Limitation of engineer's liability.
Professional liability on the insurance policy is a million, two million.
Yeah, our policy's two million dollars.
Yeah.
And this is just sort of a standard thing. If nothing's set forth, then it's set at twenty-five thousand. But again, anytime we do a task order, all these things can be revised and upon agreeing a board between the two parties. So once we did, and you know, it's hard to write a project, I mean, a contract that covers everything. And that's what we're trying to do, you know, if something that will be, you know, a two or three hour project or something, so. So, you know, it comes back to the task orders are very specific. Those will be, you know, detailed, the scope of work, the fees, the whole thing, and if anything needs to be changed, can be changed in that task order, as long as both parties agree to it.
But if the engineer's limitation of liability is not addressed in the task order, it reverts to this number, correct?
Right, you know, it is, if nothing changes, it's that, twenty-five thousand. But if, you know, if we specify something differently in our task order, then yes, it goes up. It's just nothing says it goes, reverts back.
And that's what Tony mentioned, as far as, you know, you change your workman's comp and E and O and per the project, is that correct, Tony?
Yeah, and I'd like, the clause in question relates to if there is no professional insurance, and in this case, the professional liability provides you a million per claim.
Two million.
Two million aggregate.
Right.
So the twenty-five thousand dollars would only be if it's, the claim is not covered under the professional liability insurance. So most of the professional negligence by the engineer should be covered by the liability insurance, and this is just a, in the event it's not covered for some reason, and it's actually hard to come up with those when you're talking about professional engineering services, but the default is twenty-five thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a second. Any more discussion? I see none. All in favor, show of hands. That's unanimous. Okay, we're on seven. Consider and take appropriate action regarding CPNY Inc.'s response to director comments received regarding the hydraulic model and distribution system capacity study. You have a staff report on this, or?
I believe it was last month, the, Mr. Rose brought some comments, and the board asked that we have the engineer address those comments from the water model and a study that we had performed earlier this year. And so I forwarded those comments on to the engineers, and they went through each comment, and if you go to the the comments and responses in your packet, they start on page one-fifty. And what they did was they kind of put a footnote of, or a note of what page the comment was on, and I think in some cases, Mr. Rose had highlighted the area, so they showed the area that was highlighted, and he had placed comments, and then their response. So if you go through the document, that's how it's laid out, where they show what was highlighted, what the comment was, and then their response to that comment. I also included in your packet a copy of the study, in case you want to look back to the original report. They do have the report page included on there.
Okay, Mr. Rose, did you have any presentations on this?
Well, yes. Excuse me. I did make a handout for distribution at the dais.
This copy.
Speaking about population projections. As I think everyone is aware, I think that the, this particular hydraulic study needed to have some refinement accomplished on it. The two key items to begin with are the determination of population and also the determination of the number of connections.
Okay. Are you gonna address the population and then the connections?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll just kind of flow down through the page and have a discussion. First of all, looking at the population, I went to North Central Texas Council of Governments website. They have a well-recognized data, data center, regional data center for North Texas. They keep a regular update on populations. The population that was used, I believe, in the study was fourteen thousand. The regional data center had an estimate, one January fifteen, of ten-six, ten thousand six hundred and ninety. They estimated first of this year at ten thousand eight hundred and sixty. The last word I had is we had a hundred and ten lots left available in the town, at two point eight persons, would be three hundred and eight people. Urban residential going in PD thirty, two hundred and fifty units, a generous two people on those, adds another five hundred people. Have thirty-eight townhomes. I went ahead and put two point eight people in them for a hundred and six people. That brings a total of, to eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy-four.
Okay, let me just ask you a question.
Sure.
You mentioned the NCT cog. Where do they get their information from?
They start off using the baseline census, and then they use building data from the towns with a, with a population factor based, as I understand it, on the town's historical average.
Okay, I actually called them today, and they said that, pretty much what you just said, they rely on the permits of the town. And then the information in here may or may not be correct. They send a letter to the town manager and ask them to confirm or deny these reports. Their response back is about fifteen or twenty percent for accuracy. In this report that you're referencing, I guess you're referencing the April, I think it's April twenty-sixteen report of the NCT cog, is that correct?
I didn't write a date down. I believe that's correct.
It's April twenty-sixteen. If you look at that report, it breaks it down, the report you were looking at breaks it down by county, is that correct?
They, yes, county then city.
Okay, on page, let me see, Denton County is starting on page four, and has trophy club. And the consensus, the census report, the consensus report, what you stated was eighty-twenty-four. And total population is ten-eight-sixty, and those are the numbers that you just quoted, correct?
That's what I read.
Okay, we have houses in Tarrant County. So if you look at Tarrant County, there is no trophy club listed.
That's right. If you refer on that document, in there, it talks about the fact that if you have a city that overlays a county, they're all included in one county, which would be Denton County for us.
But that line on the report is addressed as split cities adjustment. It's broken out separately. So the number of Tarrant County is not in there, in our number, the ten-eight-sixty. That's what the person at the North Central Texas cog told me. He said that number should have been in the other one, as far as the split. The region is what, if you look at the footnote on here, it says about split cities. Real quick, it says county totals are adjusted for cities that have boundaries in more than one county. Cities that extend outside the NCT cog region show the city total. However, the population of the city's population that is not in the region, not the county, the region, is not included in the county or regional numbers. Cities whose boundaries extend into the North Central Texas cog region, but do not have a majority of the population within the region, are not included in the city's listings.
Isn't Tarrant County included in that?
No.
Listing?
No, there's nothing, no trophy club. There's a Westlake.
But don't they show Westlake's in Tarrant County, correct?
Westlake is in Tarrant County.
So those numbers flow back across and are included.
Everyone in Tarrant, in Westlake is not in our district.
No, but the population, trophy club's population, that is in Tarrant County, based on what you just read. Because Tarrant County is within North Central Texas reading area.
The Tarrant County numbers are not in the, our numbers, trophy club for Denton County. The houses you're talking about are the ones just on our side of one-fourteen. There's about, I think I was told about a hundred and fifty or something like that, houses. So those populations aren't in there. But I'll let, I'll let you continue. I just want to make a note of that.
Okay, I read that sentence that you're talking about there differently. I read it that they are included, because north, because Tarrant County is included in the regional areas database.
I'm just letting you know with the person that I talked to.
Okay, so with a population of eleven seven hundred and seventy-four, that requires three point one-four MGD average a day. Times the two point five gives you a seven point eight-six max day demand, and times the additional two point three-three gives you an eighteen point three-one MGD peak hour demand. So then I went to citidata.com, and they used a twenty-fourteen population, they showed eleven thousand two hundred and twenty-seven. Once again, I added in the hundred and ten lots at two point eight for three oh-eight, urban residential, added in five hundred, townhomes, thirty-eight, again at two point eight for one point six. Come up with a total of twelve one forty-one. Now, the twelve one forty-one, take that off of the fourteen thousand in the report. Now, the twelve one forty-one, take that off of the fourteen thousand in the report, that's a hun, that's one thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine, or at two point eight people per home, six hundred and sixty-three homes. We're not gonna build any six hundred and sixty-three homes in Trophy Club. Looking at demand, a population of twelve one forty-one requires three point two four MGD average day, times the two point five is an eight point one max daily demand, and the peaking hour demand jumps to eighteen point eight seven. The max MGD per day that I had, with the phone call from, uh, the district secretary, occurred on eight thirteen twenty fifteen, was seven point three five. So, the, looking, so I'm looking at the numbers and looking for the report to reflect an accurate population in that particular area. On connections?
On, on your population number, again, let's go back to what the, uh, census eight twenty-four, okay? Eight thousand twenty-four, and you said it's at, uh, ten eight sixty. I called Ron, uh, earlier today, Ron Powell, and I said, how many permits have you issued since, uh, twenty-ten to June of twenty sixteen?
Okay.
He said the number was thirteen three eighty-seven, okay? And if you times that by two point eight, it comes to thirty-eight eighty-three, I believe?
He issued thirteen thousand three hundred and eighty?
Thirteen hundred eighty-seven.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
If you multiply that by two point eight, it comes to roughly thirty-eight eighty-three, you checking on this, Jim?
Yep.
Okay, okay, thirty-eight eighty-three, you add thirty-eight eighty-three on to, uh, eight thousand twenty-four, comes to eleven thousand nine oh seven. And that's before you add the hundred and ten lots, uh, the urban.
Okay.
The one oh six.
So the le-
The town, okay, let me finish, the town comprehensive report that is listed on the website shows the population, I believe around thirteen thousand, that's a town. You'd figure they would know how many people. Their data that's on the city info is about twelve thousand plus, it says. And you're saying, without this, it's ten thousand eight sixty, so somebody is not right here. And we have three, three sources that come to around thirteen thousand.
So if you take the eleven nine oh seven that you came up with, and add in.
The eight, nine.
Eight, nine, nine, nine fourteen.
But, again, census report is not an accurate, it's, it's an estimate, that's why they call it an estimate. So if you're estimating, say, twelve thousand five, or something like that, you know, it's still, you're taking your base, which is the census report, that leaves a lot to error, in error, especially ten years ago. If you take the report that permits, plus the consent, the, uh-
Census?
Yeah, that comes to twelve thousand or so.
Twelve eight twenty-one.
Right, the way we, at least Jim Hayes and I, were on there, and we said, okay, let's be conservative. We, we took the high road, so we're not saying, okay, we're gonna, uh, have water for thirteen thousand people, okay? If it, for some reason goes to thirteen five, someone moves in with a family of ten, or something. Where we tell them, okay, we don't have any more water. So you take the high road and plan for fourteen thousand, or something. What we did was we took the connections, which was like, like forty-four, how many connections we have?
Forty-six twenty-two, in this packet.
At this time, at, I think at that time, it was less like-
Okay, you take forty-six twenty-two, using the two point eight, what does that come up with?
Don't have my calculator.
I got a calculator.
You got one, Ben?
Yeah.
Forty-six twenty-two times-
Twenty-two times two point.
Eight.
Two point eight.
That's twelve nine.
So thirteen thousand, right, then you add the numbers that you had on there, the additional, um, three oh eight, five hundred, and one oh six, that's about, uh-
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred, and what do you, that's about thirteen eight, right?
You get thirteen eight forty-one.
There you go, and we took fourteen, that's how we came up, the connections, put the two point eight, they match up with the population, boom. You understand how I came up with?
Well, I, I see, yeah, I see how you got there.
Okay. So-
Looking, you know-
Connections are real numbers, you can put something to.
Yes.
You know, the reports, the census reports are just, okay, fill out this, are you white, Hispanic, whatever, age kids, and stuff like that. So, it's an estimate.
And that two point eight, I think that comes from, where did, where did that number come from? Because I've seen, I used, I used two point, I used two point eight.
We used, I think, two point-
I've seen two point three four.
Wasn't it?
Two point three.
Yeah, we used two point three, in our, you know, uh, numbers and stuff, when we did it that time.
TCQ typically, typically uses two point eight.
And that's what, that North Texas, North Central Texas used too.
I, I heard two points, I thought I'd seen two point seven eight someplace, but I couldn't find it.
So you agree with that population, how we got it, or came up, okay?
I, I see how, I see how you got it now, with the population. When we get to the connection side of the equation.
Okay.
I have a question on connections, because let me, I need to go to a different page here.
Let me close my population tab now, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we take, and, here again, and now we take the population number, and flow that back across the average usage.
Can I, Chief Lasky, you're more than welcome to leave, if you want to, you don't have to stay for this whole thing.
It's up to you, I'm, you're, you're part of-
Does anyone have any more questions, Chief Lasky?
Do we have, uh, something with fire that comes up? No, never mind, don't, thank you.
Thank you very much, okay, sorry to interrupt you. You're doing connections.
Doing connections. Uh, the connection number, I had a question on, in that, uh-
What page are you on?
Uh, what, I'm on one fifty-one. Is where we first mentioned connections. Open that up. Okay, see if I can't spin down and find the discussion, because there is a discussion that holds the connections, how they were calculated. Here we go, one fifty-four for the page. When I looked at the connections, uh, everybody's there, when I looked at the connections, I looked at the hundred, I, going down the list, uh, we assume fifteen more connections in Solana. I don't, I don't know about those, I don't, I don't have any projection for that. PD thirty estimated, uh, two hundred and fifty units, plus another, possibly fifty other connections for a total of three hundred. That's, those are the townhomes, which cuts that number just a little bit. Then PID possible with twenty-five more connections. The total number of lots, somewhere between, somewhere between the PID and additional homes, at one seventy-five? We only have a hundred and ten lots left, so there's extra in there.
No, Ron, Ron said it could be one twenty, he wasn't sure.
Okay, one, one ten.
Between one fifteen and one twenty.
Okay, the number I'd heard was one, one ten, earlier this year. Uh, additional business about twenty-five, I don't think we have twenty-five spots for businesses, uh, in any of the frontage areas that's, I mean, the whole, the stuff that's already being built in the town, I don't see room for twenty-five additional businesses. And then the last one is, other homes multifamily miscellaneous and contingency about eighty-five, uh-
So you, you question the six hundred number?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I, I think that number is a lot more, uh, close to, uh, I have four thirty-one on my paper, but, I mean, even four fifty would probably-
So you're saying it's a hundred and fifty high?
It would be, well, based on that, yeah, but the future, the one, the one in the, the one in the document is, uh, sixty-three eighty-three. The number I come out with was fifty fifty-three, which is, uh, thirteen hundred and thirty high. Check my math.
Gil, did you have anything on that one?
Yeah, the, the sixty-three eighty-three was an old projection, we were given, is old data, and it mentions the report that was old, and we didn't, we didn't come to that number. We came to fifty-one seventeen, in the report. And that's close to your fifty fifty-three, we're a little bit over, but they're similar. But the sixty-three eighty-three, we said we didn't see a way you could get that high.
Okay, so did you correct the report to have the fifty-one seventeen in it?
That's what's in the report, fifty-one seventeen.
Okay, I must have missed that.
And all the analysis was done based on the fifty-one.
Seventeen?
Not the sixty-three.
Right.
Okay, great.
Mike, do you mind going to lobby, I, I don't know if someone's out there talking, but I think some of the voices might pick up, and just ask them if they could, you know, go outside, or go into glass doors, thank you.
Okay, let me spin on down here.
So that answers your question, Mr. Ron?
Yeah, if, if the fifty-one seventeen is the number that the data was done within the report, I would agree that that's probably a-
Yeah, that's right, okay.
That's a lot closer to the fifty fifty-three.
Okay, do you have anything else on that?
Or not on that page?
Okay.
So that, that number's gonna be probably over by the eighty-five added number that was tossed in there, which now it's generated a fair amount of.
Well, something that we, you'd wanna do, is you'd wanna be conservative, and there are estimates about, you know, the persons per household. Over time, you can't estimate that, that's, that could change, it may or may not. But you want, the idea is to have a little bit of contingency in there, so you-
I understand.
Would have a little bit extra, versus having a little bit less.
I understand, my concern is, uh, the comment in the, in the report where it says you could not, uh, couldn't duplicate, couldn't justify the data that you were given, and so therefore you took and spread the addition across the entire base.
That's right, and when you do the hydraulic model, you have to locate your demand.
Yes.
And so we located all the demands that we could, based on the aerial photos, and what we thought new connections would be, but then we had a little bit left over. So where do we put it, we just spread it evenly across the entire system, and that would represent a little bit, household, count per household up, going up.
I under, I understand.
Yeah.
That methodology, but the appearance is that it was, you know, that there was an error in the copy, in the data that you were given, there was a difference between what you were given, and what you were able to locate, so therefore you just spread it across, which would be, you know, a realistic way to do it. But the problem becomes is getting the correct number to begin with, so that you don't need to do that.
Well, the original estimate is like the sixty-three eighty-three connections, that was older data, that, you know, just hadn't been updated.
Okay, now, is it-
What, what else do you have issued?
Standby. Okay, uh, on page one fifty-six.
Okay.
Highlighted intake cas, capacity according operators, operations experience is seven point nine MGD. And when I was touring the waste, perhaps I misunderstood, but when I was touring the water plant, I understood that they had set the butterfly valve, the flow was low, and they'd opened it up, and the flow, something happened with the flow, the pressure probably changed. And they come back and checked it, and it was at, uh, ten million gallons a day. Now, I may have misunderstood that, but, uh-
Well, most likely, anyone who said ten million's going, they, they were talking about flow going out to the customers, not coming in from forward.
Yes, and that's exactly what it was.
Okay, so I-
I think on max capacity, we can probably get through those butterfly valves right now, is probably around seven point five, depending on what pressure. And the additional comes from the storage tanks, correct? That's going into the storage tanks. Yeah, but I'm saying, where the ten million might have come from, is you have water capacity already saved up by the storage tanks.
Yeah.
You can actually pump more than you receive.
It's, it's an outflow.
And we do that, we do that a lot.
I understand that. Okay, uh, and you say probably with the current, current capability. Now, I understand that we're getting water from the Kaler tank. I understand that they've either built, or are building, a line going to the Kaler tank to increase the flow to the tank, which will allow them to keep a higher level, which should give us greater pressure, if it's been, if it's been running low. So one of the questions I have is, what is the capability of that line? The line that I'm talking about, is the twenty-one inch line? With, with Kaler tank at seventy-five percent, eighty percent full, uh, in the pressure plane? What's the, what's the capability of that line to move water?
We don't know that exactly, because that also depends on if Westlake's taking water, and how much.
Because, well, well, Westlake peels their water off, or takes their water off the line before it enters, or at the same point it enters ours, correct?
Yeah, the water before it would come into the twenty-one inch line, it goes through, to Westlake, through their point. So if they are taking water, that changes the pressure, and the water available to come in the twenty-one inch line. So, there's a lot of variables, so, uh, in the course, the elevation in the tank is important, at Kaler.
That's the primary thing.
So what is the ultimate capacity?
What's the, yeah, what's the capability of that line?
You, you could find the optimum, maximum, the maximum capacity, but then you couldn't, whatever that was, you wouldn't be able to get it all the time.
Because of the level of-
Because things have changed.
In the Kaler tank.
Tank levels change, demands downstream change.
Now, when we get the new line coming in from the Kaler tank to three seventy-seven, the one that, the thirty inch line, that should resolve the loss in pressure with Westlake's use, would that be correct, or significant?
Yeah, it would help.
So that takes me back to my same question. I'm trying to determine how much water we can put through that twenty-one inch line, based on, one, the pressure off the Kaler tank, and two, if we'd have insufficient pressure off the Kaler tank, if we put a boost, some boost pumps out there, at that three seventy-seven connection? What type of pressure would we need to move our requirement, which we think, maximum requirement, uh, let's see, what do we have, eight point one, nine, what, what was the max, I don't have it right here.
We, uh-
You calculated it?
We had nine point three.
Okay, nine point three, so how much pressure do I need to move nine point three through that line?
That would need to be analyzed and calculated.
Okay, because it's a, because there's a, one, there's a question if it can be done, and I would, I don't know. But if it can be done, then you have to look at the cost analysis between adding pumps to pressurize the line, and move the water, and take that cost and weigh it off against building another line. So the question then becomes, if the new line is gonna cost me thirteen million dollars, is it more cost effective to put in a booster plant, booster pump out there, and move the water on those, during those times when I need that additional water?
Basically, what you're saying is, you're just meeting demands. The additional line actually, you know, looks for peak times and things.
Well, I think the peak, pink, the peak time part of the equation is solved in this, on this same page, because we work peaks, I mean, the water plant works peaks all through the summer, peak demands. And the way they do that is they maintain a flow, in this case, on page one fifty-six, it says five point four MGD, they're working the butterfly valve, to maintain a flow at a rate so that we don't receive a peaking charge. Thank you very much, that's a good job. What we do is we then use a constant flow to fill the tanks, and then allow those tanks to fluctuate as we pump out, based on the demands for the, that the citizens, residents have. So if I'm looking at the numbers I have today, and we're operating at five point four, my real question is, what did we operate at last summer, when we had the large demands?
Those are the last summer numbers, that's-
Five point four?
Yeah, that's seven point three five, so.
Okay.
I mean, if all of our tanks are full, we've almost got almost seven million gallons of water in town, with the elevators, ground storage, and everything. So when I'm selling seven point three, I'm actually draining all of our tanks, and- So when I'm selling seven point three, I'm actually draining all of our tanks and selling more water than, you know, what we're bringing in.
So you're, so you're not bringing in, at that point, you're not bringing in five point four.
Yeah, I'm bringing in five point four, but I'm selling seven point three.
But it's, but I'm looking at the front end of the equation now. I'm looking at the water coming through the line to get to the tank because I'm trying to work the sizing of the line. So if the sizing of the line, I mean, if you're meeting demands today with the seven point, whatever you require, with a five point four line, because you can bring in the water when it's not being used and use those tanks to fluctuate to control, to, to feed the demand, doing what we need to do, then I have a question on whether I really needed an additional line or not.
Well, I think, see, the, the thing I don't think you're getting when I'm selling seven point three and only bringing in five point four, the next day when everybody wants to water and everything, I'm already two million gallons.
Yes.
Deficit.
Yes, and that raises the, I, I understand that.
That's where you start, starting to hit your peaking charge, 'cause eventually you gotta make that up somewhere.
Yes, but what you're telling me is that last year, you went through the summer, did you stay, you didn't stay at five point four? You went to seven point something on in, inbound water?
No.
You stayed at five point four?
Stayed at five point four.
Okay, so basically what, first of all, thank you for doing a good operation. So basically what we're saying here is due to good operations and the size of our storage tanks, we're working with five point four and meeting the demand. Okay? That line out there has, did we ever come up with what that, we, we've had a max reported of seven point nine capability. So right now, I'm looking at a difference of two point five million gallons a day excess in the line.
Again, I think what you're doing is you're saying, okay, what needs do we have today? And can you just restate the purpose of the line?
Well, it's, your line is adequate for today, but when you get to your final build out and you do have the fourteen thousand or close population and your max day is more like nine point three, then where he, now he can make up those deficits, he won't be able to anymore. Uh, that, the capacity of that line just won't serve your peak days. And another issue with the line is it's a single source. You have a single source of water and that is, needs to be considered as well, as well as the age, age of the pipeline.
Okay, let's, let's, um...
Move on.
Let's talk about, uh, single, uh, well, we still haven't determined what that, we know from operational experience, the pipeline's capable of seven point nine. Would that be a grade?
Yes, is that?
Well, you said seven point five.
Seven point nine out of it. I think about.
Seven point five?
About seven point five would be the max I could ever get out of it.
Okay. Okay.
You, you could probably get more than that at certain times. It depends on conditions upstream.
Okay, it's, it's, at some point, sometime it did, did do the seven point nine because that's found in more than one document. Okay, accepting that, let's talk about multiple source. And I agree that we would be much farther ahead or much wiser if we had more than one source for our water. So my question was, what happened to South Lake? Because South Lake has a line in T W King, right near our water tank. And so I'd ask that that be explored. Uh, I don't have any hard copy on that yet.
Um, I wanna say.
As part of, as part of the study, that wasn't our scope.
I understand that.
Mentioned in the report as something to be worthwhile.
Yes.
But it, but wasn't it within our scope, but that's something that, you know.
The point is that Fort Worth is not going to let Trophy Club buy water from South Lake.
Yeah, see that?
They never have, they never will.
Well, I don't have anything.
He sells the water themselves. Nobody else sells their water.
Well, we could buy, it's not, it's not been ex, I haven't seen a hard copy, one, that says that they will not do it.
I've been privy to a conversation where Frank Crumb said, "Nobody sells my water except Frank Crumb."
Okay, then I would like to buy his water from him and route it through.
Pipe dream.
Well.
The, you're bringing in, buying water from other, uh, entities. What happens when it's a dry summer and they need that capacity? They aren't gonna give you a contract that guarantees you thirty, you know, whatever, thirty percent of their capacity. That's not gonna happen. I wouldn't do it here. And again, as Director Hayes mentioned, Fort Worth, when we had to sell water to the town, we had to, you know, have discussion on that and the only way they let us is we're one, you know, city. So that's the only waiver we got. As far as selling it to Roanoke or Westlake as a whole, that wasn't gonna happen.
Well, there's, there's a difference between buying it and selling it to somebody and allowing Fort Worth to run that capacity. Fort Worth allowing them to run that, run their capacity through a line. There's a difference in that discussion.
You're gonna say, they're gonna just say whatever our, our cost is, even though we have transportation costs because their water actually comes around Keller, through Keller. It doesn't come down one fourteen. So they're gonna give it to us at cost?
No.
That's not gonna happen.
Well, but here again, it's not been explored.
So why not go to Roanoke then, or, you know?
I don't know where, I, Roanoke get their water from.
Yep, I just don't think it's a good thing. We're, we can buy water from the source, so why go to someone else that buys it from the same source? It doesn't make any sense.
Well, if you've been, you're looking for multiple routings for your water to get there. Let's talk about age a little bit on this.
Move on to age.
The age of the line. Uh, the report says that the, uh, line, uh, is forty-plus years old and is approaching the end of its useful life, or approaching its useful life. I did some research and, now it's upside down. I did some research and I find the approaching end of its u, approaching its useful life to be questionable, uh, in that I followed your, uh...
What page are you on?
Well, right now, my, right now, my computer page is upside down. It's inverted. Standby. We'll rotate it.
I think he's on one fifty-seven.
Yeah, just, while you're looking for that, I just, uh, I just, on the Mayor Sanders, and I don't expect him to comment on this, but in his, uh, town address, he was actually coming up with a, where we have a hundred and twenty, he was stating, and he had accurate numbers at that time, two hundred and sixty additional houses versus the, uh, one hundred and ten, one twenty number. So there's additional population already there. So I appreciate that information
Okay.
that the mayor put out on May, I think it was May twenty-third.
That is State of the Union. Okay, looking at the, uh, age of the line. If we, uh, and Gil mentioned in his report there that, uh, A W W A had discussed the lifespan of the pipe. I'm down on page one fifty-seven now. So I went and looked at that report and I found some interesting things in it. I need some clarification. Uh, do we have the P C C P pipe? Is that what we have out there?
Uh, I don't have drawings of it, but that's what it should be. It's pre-stressed, uh, concrete cylinder pipe. That's what you normally use for pressure.
But we don't know that that's what it is?
Well, do you know if that's what it is?
It is. Okay, do we, any chance that we know who the manufacturer was on it?
No, if I had to guess, so I would say maybe Gifford Hill.
Okay, the reason I, there's a reason to ask. Uh, in that, in that document, that A W W A Research Foundation document, talks about failures and has some graphs in there. And the interesting thing from those graphs is that, uh, when the pipe gets thirty-five years old, the rate of failure drops on the pipe. Doesn't increase, doesn't keep going up, it decreases. The other thing that I discovered is that the rate of failure on the pipe, when I read, read the comment here, I thought that it was close to the end of its useful life and it's gonna fall apart. The rate of failure is one to two percent. And so that, and like I said, that decreases over thirty-five years.
Are, Mike, what's the most common failure you're seeing on pipes? Shifting of ground? Yeah, a lot of that, the last break we actually had on that twenty-one inch line, they were saying that maybe another contractor maybe chipped some of the concrete off and everything and it started rusting, but we've actually had a break right up here in front of the church.
That was the one that was several years ago?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that eight years old. And so that one here again was probably caused by an outside, an outside problem.
So what, what's your concern about that?
My, my point on the pipe is I don't think age is a problem with the pipe. Uh, if you go, uh, if you go do some other research, you'll find that, uh, the, the solution that's generally used on a pipe situation like this is to come back and slipline it. Sliplining costs you about thirty percent, thirty to, thirty percent was the number I saw, of what it costs you to dig in trench.
That would reduce the, uh...
Diameter slightly.
Diameter and the flow.
Uh, but when you do that, but you do that, you get another fifty years on the pipe. So I'm not, I'm not sure.
And the report was we wanted to see that capacity of the line increase, though we wanted to go from a twenty-one to a twenty-four inch.
Yeah.
So sliplining would, would be a good, good option for extending the life of that pipeline, but it wouldn't give you the additional capacity.
Yeah. It would actually probably decrease your capacity slightly.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, on down, in the report, yes. Uh, we're ter, we're, you know, we talk about, talking about failure a little bit, if it fails. Uh, this I learned during my recent, uh, time down at my director's, my new director's training.
A W B D?
A W B D New Director Training. Pipe failure. First thing you don't do when you have a pipe failure is run out and turn the water off. I found that very interesting. Uh, seemed like the first thing you do is you just kinda clean it out and get all your equipment in place to put, to put the, uh, sleeve on it. And then you reduce the pressure to thirty PSI, because he said, the gentleman said, "You can't get the sleeve on it unless you reduce the pressure down to about thirty." And at thirty, he said, "You'll slip that sleeve across it and you can tighten it down and your water problem is solved." The other thing that I got out of that report, out of that, that, uh, session was a discussion by an engineer, uh, Norm Shoals, Senior Project Engineer. If you've been with A W B D, you're probably recognizing. And I asked Norm, I said, "How do I, how do I know the health of my water lines and my sewer line? How do I know what condition they are in?" And he says, "You don't and you won't know until they start failing." He says, "You wait until they start failing. When you start to have multiple failures, then you start looking for solutions. But until then, you just wait." I thought that was an interesting, interesting comment. So my point at, at this point would be any concept that we need to replace that line as a result of age is, uh, I don't think it's supported. Let's see, spinning on down the pages, uh... Just more yellow. Okay, location of a ground storage tank. There's been some discussion about there's only one location. As I, you watch the tapes, it seems to be everybody points at where the police station's at and says, "Gonna put a ground sta, ground storage tank in, it's gotta go there." So I asked the question if it had to go there and the answer is, no, it doesn't, but it would require moving a power line, some power lines leading to, uh, a metal storage building. But if we moved the metal storage building or replaced it, I think that we'd be able to put a ground storage tank in the fenced-in area. Would that be correct?
There seems to be enough square footage if you move stuff out of the way.
Okay, thank you. Uh...
I guess, can I ask a question? Is there a issue with doing that? Is there a strategic? Would, is it better place, do you lose anything by going from proposed to in the fenced area? Is there a downside to doing that, other than simply having to move stuff?
It's almost the same location. It's just, you know, there's not much difference.
So there's no downside? You're not losing anything?
Well, off the top of my head, other than you're gonna have to relocate. I guess when I laid out the, over the aerial of it, uh, if we put the tank there, then I saw, well, I'd move the maintenance barn and all the equipment where the police station is. So it almost became like a.
Mike, Robert Scott used to say, "If you moved that tank inside the fence," there were a lot of underground, I don't know if they're pipes or electrical lines or what, but he, he seemed to think that was a significant problem of the piping and the electricity if he moved it inside the...
Yeah, we do have one of our, right at the end of that barn, I guess it would be on the west side, was one of our big main distribution lines. We've got like a twenty-four inch distribution line running out there, so we'd have to stay clear of that too. And the only other thing is from the police station to where the barn is, is a grade change. I mean, there's a, probably a significant grade change there.
We could fill that.
What's that?
They haul dirt around here all the time. We could fill that.
So
It is possible.
Just to, just to kinda summarize, so we would have to, in order to move it into the fenced area, we would have to kind of veer our way or at least find out about any yard piping that's out there. We would have to move, relocate the maintenance barn that's there currently. Am I understanding that correctly? And the, and the bins where we keep the dirt and all of that, all of that area would have to be relocated. So we would be relocating a building to put the tank in that area, correct?
And there's overhead electrical there and at the end of that electrical line, that's where actually Fort Worth gets their electricity for their vault.
Okay, but it could be done.
I assume if the electric company would agree to it.
But it, but it, I, I would agree that there would be an additional expense. Certainly agree to that, but it's not quantified.
Well, I speak for myself, but when it comes time to vote for the eighteen million dollar bond, I like the idea of having a twenty-four inch pipe and a twenty-one, so it simulates a loop. It's not truly a loop, but if the twenty-four goes down on an emergency basis, you can go back to the twenty-one. So I like the backup it gives you. I, I hear what Bill says about, he doesn't think there's a problem with the forty-year-old pipe. I don't know that. Nobody, nobody knows.
Yeah, there's a study, um, A W W A did, and I'm kinda, I'm looking at it right now as we talk, and it says there are high failures and it gives on page eighty-one, eighty-three of the study, you know, what the most common, the breakdown of the wiring, shifting of land, uh, you know, settlement, settlement, which I just said. And it structures often the result of poor comp, uh, compaction of bedding. Let's see, so, I mean, you can maybe look at it. I'll send you that link, Bill.
I've got it. I, I have the document.
A W D, W A Research
Yeah.
for failure, pre-stress concrete.
Yes. Right here.
And eighty-one and eighty-three basically call out, you know, reasons the pipe failure.
Yeah, the, uh, yeah, the, it talks about different categories.
Yeah, the, well, the last thing you want is that pipe to break. I mean, it's forty years old and we can sit here all night and discuss, "Well, it could last another fifty, could last another ten. It might need to last another week." We don't know that, so.
May last a hundred.
I mean.
Well, one, another key thing to remember though is, is, it would be great if that, if it lasts another hundred years and you'll have two parallel lines if you put a new one in. But the twenty-one inch by itself would be a capacity issue.
But on emergency basis, but on emergency basis.
You think of those things.
Yeah.
But it'd be better than nothing. If the twenty-one broke and you didn't have the twenty-four.
If you, if you had a, if you had two parallel lines like you're saying, then you've got a redundant backup.
I think.
Point I wanted to make is I've, I've enjoyed this discussion, but when it comes times to vote for the eighteen million dollars, based on what I've heard so far, I don't wanna go through this same discussion again.
Okay.
And do you have anything else?
Yeah, I wanna talk, I'm gonna talk about the ground storage tank some more, but, uh, the parallel line. Are we gonna, would we be looking at putting the second line in the same easement that the current line's in?
That would be the best option.
Okay, so if there was a ground fault or something, then both lines would be affected. The other thing about two lines is if we don't keep, what, twenty PSI, minimum pressure in both lines? is if we don't keep, what, twenty PSI, minimum pressure in both lines, then you run into, uh,
It will be, it will be an issue. They'll, they'll be hydraulically connected. The pressure will be.
Okay, so you're gonna be running both lines simultaneously rather than actually holding one in reserve?
Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily. I mean, you could, you could shut one off, be an option, but you wouldn't, you'd need to.
Okay, I want to talk about the ground storage tank.
I'm sorry, Bill, I'm gonna go back. Did, did he answer the question about the twenty PSI? Because we're not.
No, yeah, he, yes, he did, because he said he would keep them both flowing.
Okay, alright, just me. Well, I thought you were kind of leading to would that be a T C Q compliance issue, and I want to say that it is not because that is not a distribution line, so we are not required to keep the twenty PSI in it. Although we certainly want to because we want to get it at a higher pressure, but that is not a requirement.
Okay, the other thing I want to talk about is the requirement for an additional ground storage tank. I haven't seen anything that states that we're required to have additional storage.
All, all you're required is, uh, T C Q requires is it two hundred gallons per connection?
Okay, and we meet, and we meet that.
Way above that.
Okay, and we meet that. What about the fire coverage? How did they calculate the fire coverage? Cause we have to have fire coverage capable.
Fire coverage would be covered by your elevated tanks, not your ground storage tank.
Okay, but, but how much volume? Is the volume addressed?
They have a, a minimum per connection elevated storage.
And that's the one hundred, the one hundred?
It's less, it's a hundred gallons.
Okay, so the requirement is either two hundred elevated or one hundred with a hundred in ground reserve, and that's our only requirement. Is that correct?
Other way around, but yeah.
Yeah, okay.
One hundred in elevated.
A total of two, you can have two hundred in an elevated.
One hundred has to be elevated.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, so I understand that. So I went out and tried to find out what justification there would be for having more ground storage than we already have. I couldn't find anything that referenced twenty-four hours. Not a thing. I did find one document that talks about calculating ground storage. And what it says, or calculating storage, what it says is fifty percent of the average total daily domestic requirements plus all industrial requirements. This will provide minimum operational storage needed to balance average daily peak demands on the system and to provide an emergency supply to accommodate essential water needs during minor supply outages of up to one day duration. So that's fifty percent of the average total daily domestic requirements, and in my mind, that would be found on the winter averaging amount. Then it goes on to talk about the fire demand. The fire demand is the required fire flow needed to fight a fire in a facility, including water required to support fire suppression, which constitutes the largest requirement for any facility served by the water supply system. Do that, then you add the fifty percent average domestic demand in on top of it again. The fire demand quantity must be maintained in storage for fire protection at all times except during a firefighting operation. So that would be the one hundred, the one hundred gallons per connection. So my question is, what's the basis for another storage tank? We're already there.
It's, it's an operational decision. It's how you want to operate the system. It's, there's no rule that says what you have to have. And like you said, there's not a lot of guidelines. It's just, it, it's, it's how you want to operate the system. It's, it's your decision.
So if we build, if I build another line in to bring in additional capacity, then I don't need another storage tank in my mind because I've got the capacity flow coming in. I don't need all of the ground storage requirement. If I stick with the same line, then I run into the, how much extra capacity, ground storage capacity do I need to meet my outflow requirements over a weekly basis? Does that make sense? I'm storing it.
It's your, it's.
Okay, so if I build a line, in my mind, if I build a line, and we're bringing in five point four today, average, if I build a line and I'm gonna be, be able to bring in more, I don't need another ground storage tank.
Okay, the line you're saying build is the one that you don't want to build, right? So now you want to build it?
I'm balancing, I'm, I'm balancing the equation.
Okay.
Balancing the equation.
Cause you said not to build a line and we went an hour conversation.
You would base your.
Now you're saying.
I'm balancing the equation.
I thought that, I mean, the storage tank actually helps reduce any peak charges. Is that correct?
Yes, it would.
So, but.
And where do the peak charges usually run? I know it's a three-year.
It's a three-year average and are actually, we got it not too long ago. I think it's five point three seven for this year. If we go over that, we get hit with probably about a hundred and seventy thousand dollar charge.
That stays for three years, right? I mean, the peak charge goes for three years rolling average, yeah.
It's a three-year average, yes, rolling average.
But, but if you've increased the amount of water coming in, you have to take less water out of the current tanks that you have.
You're saying to use, and I understand what you're saying, if you can get more in there, but you have to store it somewhere because once the tanks are full, that's all you have.
No, but what I'm saying is, is if the tanks are full or the tanks are empty, you've got a flow of water coming in to mate and out, to meet a demand going out. If you're bringing in more water than the demand going out, the tank's gonna fill. If you're bringing in less water, clearly, than the water going out, the tank's going to lose some of its volume. That's what it's designed to do. It's a, it's an operational equation. So here again, so long as you have that capacity to meet your total requirement with flow coming in versus flow go, verse, flow coming in with storage water to meet or exceed what's going out, you don't need another tank. And if you build a line, you're gonna be bringing more water in. You're, you are going to change the amount.
As long as there's no breaks in that line or.
Yep.
Something doesn't happen and, I mean, it, to, the way we operate is you have backups and you have reasons to make, you always plan for the unexpected. Don't, you don't use, you say, well, we only need this, so why do we build another storage tank? Because we can pump, we have the capacity come in. Okay, what if that line breaks somewhere?
If that line.
We don't have any more water because.
If that line breaks, first of all, we talked about line breaks before in that until you get, you're going to continue pump pressure through that line while you're repairing it. You're gonna continue an inflow into the system. If you don't, you're gonna be down for a very short period of time.
Mike, can you address that? How you repair a line?
Well, on a normal line, I mean, even our smaller six-inch lines, if you've got probably thirty, forty PSI on that line, I mean, I'm, I'm not an engineer, but just calculating gallons, I mean, that's a lot of water. When you're talking a twenty-one, twenty-four inch line, you're talking probably thousands of gallons of minute.
You can't get in there and put the clamp on.
No, you wouldn't be able to pump the water out fast enough to see the pipe.
I, I think maybe the engineer may have been addressing more, what, maybe he was talking about small diameter lines. And we do try to repair them, what, hot as much as possible. But a large diameter pipe like that, you are not gonna be able to repair that with thirty-five PSI. There's no way.
Okay.
With the bill, on a P C C pipe, it's wire wrapped. You cannot put a saddle over the top of that, cause it just won't work. What you have to do is you have to go back in there, take all the concrete off. You have to tap it, you have to weld that wire to the cylinder. Then you have to take whatever saddle that you're going to put there and go to the other side, weld the wire to the side, to the cylinder. Take that wrapping off, then put your clamp on there, come down and then come back in there and mortar it and everything. So that takes time.
Okay.
And you can't hardly well do it under pressure because you just, you just, so you're dumping, and if you happen to be on this end of the line, you're gonna empty twenty-one inches of water all the way down there. If, if you want to break it, you want to break up the top end so you don't have.
On, on top of the hill, I understand that.
The point being is, it's not just an easy fix like you slap a saddle. On a PVC, C nine hundred, yeah, you can do that, no problem. But on a, on a concrete line, it doesn't work that way.
On this P C C pipe, is that, does, I understand the wire wrap, but does that also have a steel cylinder in it? So it's got both a steel cylinder and a wire wrap, plus the concrete in it?
There's two, there's two different kinds. There's a pre-stress and a pre-tension pipe. What you have, you have a steel cylinder.
Can you talk a little bit closer to the mic, please?
I'm sorry.
Pull, pull the microphone up, so.
You have a steel cylinder lined with concrete and then you, if it's posted, you wrap it to add its strength into the pipe, then, then you will coat it.
Another coat of concrete.
If it's pre-tensioned, you take that cylinder, wrap it, and then you pre-tension that pipe to shrink that pipe down theoretically, infinitesimal. Then put that on there, so when you put water in there, it forces it back up. So, but yes, it has a steel cylinder and a wire wrap, both of them.
Okay, you know, here, here's my issue is, we have engineers, very qualified engineers. We have very qualified water workers and it seems like you're questioning their ability or their ability to do their job. And unless you're an engineer, you know, certified by the state of Texas, or you have a license, you know, you, when people come to your house to change your dishwasher or do your roof, do you sit up there and go, why are you doing this? Why are you doing that? You have to have confidence because that, you selected the contractor to do the job. Don't get me wrong, I don't mind you questioning, but you, you, you're just taking it to another level where you're going down. If you have a question, then, and they've answered it multiple times from what I see. And we could sit here and have meetings until two o'clock in the morning every time if you want to. It doesn't matter to me. I don't have any kids or anybody at home, but it seems like you just keep beating the same thing over and over again. And I would appreciate you getting to the point on things, asking specific questions and answering them. Don't ask about, you know, lines and things like that. But I, don't get me wrong, we're here, you know, to ask questions, but there's a certain extent that it's an overkill, my, my things. So if you have additional questions, please ask them.
I, I don't know, I would say this, uh, if he's gonna be voting, he has to be comfortable. So, um, I, I've seen us micromanage a whole lot of other stuff. Well, the fire would be one of them. So, I mean, I, I, I don't like being here two o'clock in the morning, in the morning anyone else, but I think that was a rather condescending remark. If a person has a question and they want to get clarification, to be able to make sure they're comfortable because they're ultimately gonna be accountable for why they made, why they asked, why they voted the way they did, they have to get comfortable. So, uh, I, I think that remark was uncalled for.
Well, I, I, I know what you're saying, but I disagree where he, they're professionals. You have to rely on the professionals. You talk about the fire. Did they sit there and interrogate the person that was doing the A C system? No. We asked a question, was it a commercial or residential? So you kind of do. And again, I said, I don't mind the questions because you have to be comfortable as a director to vote and I have to be comfortable. So I'll ask the questions too. But it seems like you're asking the same question over again and then you're questioning their ability. I mean, they, at some point, if you don't have confidence in them, then we need to get another contractor.
The discussion on the quantity or the amount of the storage required in the ground storage tank is not a decision that rests with the two gentlemen out there. I've asked for additional data. I've asked for support for justification for the twenty-four hour requirement. I have documentation that suggests something else, that suggests the program. The state requirement is out there. We know what it is. We exceed that state requirement multiple times.
Did they answer your questions that you submitted to them?
The question is, is do they have anything else that talks about a requirement? Does, does A W W A, let me ask you this. Does A W W A have anything in their publications that you're aware of that addresses determining ground storage requirements for a facility that's supplied by both a well and, uh, an outside water source?
Anything beyond the T C E Q requirements?
Yes.
I don't know of anything. Do you?
Uh, no, my analogy is they're not. And the T C E Q requirements are ma- are minimum and they do not include fire protection. Uh, great.
We just, we just, Gil just said.
T C Q does not include fire protection.
Gil just said the thousand, the one hundred elevated is fire.
Hundred gallons per capita for, uh, for elevated storage is a pressure requirement. It's not a fire.
Okay, so what's the fire requirement?
The fire requirement is not set by T C Q.
Who sets it?
It's set by, uh.
The municipality.
Fire insurance board of ISO.
Well, no, the municipal, if you're located within a municipality, they set a fire flow requirement.
So what does that fire flow requirement equate to for us?
The fire flow is, it's, uh, we use a thousand gallons at twenty PSI deliverable at any point in the system.
So I, I only required a thousand gallons for my fire requirement?
Per minute.
Flow rate.
How many minutes do I have to have?
For, uh, two, two hours, two hours.
I guess if we do a second tank, if we do a second line, uh, without a tank, will we meet that requirement?
Will you meet the fire requirements if, if that's what you're asking?
Will, would we also meet the requirement to, uh, for Mike, uh, as far as peak, uh, availability for water?
Yeah, that, that kind of, that's an operation standpoint.
No, I, I, I'm at, okay, no, no, I apologize, let me say this. I'm asking you as an engineer, not as her. I'm asking you, based on what the minimum requirements are, do we meet the requirements of T C E Q for water? Not based on operationally what we want to do.
Yes.
Do we meet the T C E Q requirements?
Yes, you, for the, for the, for water storage, you just need the hundred gallons per connection elevated and the two hundred gallons total. And you can, you can calculate that at any time when you know your connections and the volume of your tanks. And you, and you do meet it now.
Uh, at, once we get to, if we're saying the number's five thousand.
When you get to the fourteen thousand population, the report says you still, you still meet it.
How far do we exceed it? Are we, if the, if the, if the requirement is one, are we at one point one? Are we at two point six? Are we at ten point three? Do we meet and exceed it by a significant amount or are we barely getting there?
Greg, can I address that? The, for ground storage, the requirement is a hundred gallons per connection. So if we have five thousand connections, that means we have to have five hundred thousand gallons of storage tank, of, of ground storage. Same for elevated. You have to have a hundred gallons per connection. So if we have five thousand connections, we have to have five hundred thousand gallons of elevated storage. Okay, that's the T C Q requirement. So as it stands right now, it, and different in the PID, they have no ground storage. They only rely on elevated. So they have to have two hundred gallons of elevated, okay? So in the mud, right now, we have around thirty-five hundred connections, I'm gonna say. And so that would be three hundred and fifty thousand gallons of, of ground storage that we need by, to meet T C Q requirements. And we have six million gallons. So we far exceed what we have to have on ground storage. On elevated storage, in the mud, we have three hundred thousand gallons. So we have, right, three hundred, I'm sorry, four hundred thousand. So we have enough for four thousand connections in, of, of elevated storage. But let's go back, and this was actually prior to me coming here, in twenty-eleven, they were running out of ground storage. When, during the drought, the, the, the ground storage tanks were, were dropping to where there was not water available. So that's why they had to rebuild them where they added a million gallon to each tank. So at that time, they had four million gallons and they increased it to six million. So the answer of what is the T C Q requirement is the minimum requirement. Does that make sense? And the minimum, all we're required to have is five hundred thousand gallons. But what Mike is saying is we're using close to that six million gallons every day. So if we only had five hundred thousand gallons of ground storage, we don't, we're gonna not have enough water for our customers. So you have to look at this not only as do you meet T C Q requirements, but do you meet the? So you have to look at this not only as, do you meet TCEQ requirements, but do you meet the demands of your customers? And so we can't, we can't just, you know, boil it down to, do we meet TCEQ requirements? Because absolutely we do. That, that's, if that's all our goal is, is to meet TCEQ requirements, we don't need to do anything more.
Yep, I, and I completely agree with you, so, and nor am I suggesting that we ever just meet the requirements. That's the reason why I asked the question, with the additional capacity of the new line, would that be enough to meet peak demand? And, and so.
And, and I, and there's a difference in Fort Worth's system and our system. Fort Worth's system is just used to fill our system, right? Our system is what goes out into the, we have our pumps that pump out into the distribution system. So I don't see how having, you know, it, it does help that we can get more water in at a time, but it's never gonna meet peak demand, ever. It's gonna take our, our system, coming out of our pumps, pumping out into the system to meet demand. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah.
And so, and, and one thing on the storage requirements that I wanna say, I don't think, and I, and I hope it wasn't, from my understanding and reading the report, it wasn't presented, this is something we need today, or even tomorrow, this is something for our long-term plan, that we're looking at, at some point, I believe we're gonna need that third tank. And you have to remember that when an emergency occurs, it's like a train heading down a track, and unfortunately, we can't just skid on the brakes and stop. It takes time to get that message out to customers. So let that three lightning strike houses happen in the middle of the night, on a good Tuesday, when odd people watering at 3:00 AM, you have a good chance of you can, you can drop those elevated tanks, you're not gonna be able to fill them fast enough, you're not gonna have enough water in the system. And even at that time, then maybe you recover from that, but your tanks are all low. Wha- how, what is your risk level? And that, I agree, you all need the information to make these decisions, because you need to, to weigh the risks of where you're comfortable, you know? No, we, we're never gonna be able to make sure that we always have water, no matter what the situation is. But what level of risk do you wanna take? And what we're saying is, you should always have enough water to last at least 24 hours, to give people time to skid on, you know, put on the brakes and say, hey, everybody stop, you know, stop watering your lawn, let's get the message out there, because we don't have any incoming water from Fort Worth, say. We don't have that line. That, that's the kinds of issues we're looking at. And so you all do need to weigh where you feel comfortable on that scale. But from our standpoint, our recommendation is that you have enough water to not bring one drop into the system, but be able to provide the demand for one or two days. What, what do you feel comfortable with?
And I think, as you said, it's not that the storage tank is gonna be done next week or next year. It's down on the priority list, as far as this, uh, bond package goes. And what's to say we don't, we, three years from now, or two years from now, we go, we really don't need it right now, and put it out for another seven years, or something like that. But you have to plan for it now, so you have everything in place, in case you do need it.
I think the, uh, the line going down, uh, 114, that's planned, I think that's heading toward these tank. I'm in support of that. I think that's important, because we need to be able to keep that east tank full, just like Fort Worth needs to be able to keep, take, Kaler tank full. But the que- the que- the question I have on that particular line is, we're gonna bring it up 114, and tie it in to something that's going into PD 30. I have a question when that's gonna occur. I mean, we can build a line, but I've got a question, how long it's gonna be before it's available? To tie into?
You mean the line across PD 30?
Yes. That's going in with that development.
The, well, the agreement that we have is that they have to start that as, you know, priority, getting any kind of permits or starting their process with the town, so.
And they pay to.
Well, I understand that they're paying for it, but, you know, they're a portion of it. But my concern is, when? Because we're having a, an ongoing problem filling these tank under high demand. So that, in my mind, I, I'm 100% behind that one. The, the ground storage tank, hmm, if, if, if the board, eight, 10 years from now, decides they need a ground storage tank, they can finance it then, as far as I'm concerned.
But a- again, it's part, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, it's part of a bond package, which may never even sell. You know, you, you sell it when you need it. I mean, we had bonds back to like 1980 or 1990.
It's only part of the bond package, because it's in there at the moment.
So.
And that's not approved.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Director?
No, I think I'm done.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any discussion? Okay, we're gonna move on to.
Thanks, Gil.
There's no, uh, action on this, is that correct, staff? Yes, no?
No, no actions necessary.
Okay, uh, eight, considering take appropriate action to approve a proposal from CPNY to draft the preliminary engineering report required for bond election for water system improvements. Contract number 2016-07-19-02. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yeah, why don't you take it, Tony, and explain?
Under the water code, uh, before.
You pull your mic down, please.
You're not used to being on TV.
No, I'm not. Um, under the water code, before municipal utility district, um, conducts a bond election, it's required to, um, prepare a preliminary engineering report. That nee- needs to be available for public inspection. The purpose of the report is to identify proposed improvements. Um, and, and theory, it gives the voters an opportunity to become educated and make an educated decision when they cast their vote. So the purpose of this item, I believe, is to authorize your, um, consulting engineers to prepare the preliminary engineering report, um, to support the proposed amount of a, a bond election, which would be conducted in November.
Yeah, and I wanna add that the majority of the preliminary engineering report is actually already completed as far, part of the, um, water study. But there is kind of a specific format that it has to be put in for the bond purposes, along with, um, costs related to, uh, you know, issuance of bonds and those sort of things. So, so there's not a whole lot of work to do with this, because, I guess that, that's easy for me to say, right? Kevan, but it shouldn't be a huge, you know, project like the waters, water system study at all. It's just a matter of taking that information and putting it into a specific format.
Kevan, do you have a approximate cost of this preliminary study?
Yeah, it's, in that, that proposal, I think we put 12,500.
Yeah.
Hopefully it won't be that much.
On page 233.
What I put in dollars on hourly rate, that way, you only pay for what we do. It's always, always hesitant to give you things when something goes to the state, because I know what it says, or I think I know what the guidelines say, but a lot of times, the state tells me that what I read and what they want are two different things. So we put a little bit of extra money in there to cover ourselves, if we had to go back and redo things.
Can you live with not to exceed 12,500?
Yes, yes.
I make a motion that, uh, we authorize CPNY to draft the preliminary engineering report required for the bond election for water system improvements, contract number 2016-07-19-02, not to exceed 12,500.
Okay, I have a motion, uh, by Director Hayes, to, um, approve the proposal not to exceed 12,500, is that correct, Director Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second? I'll second it. So Director Hayes made a motion, I second it. Show hands, all in favor.
Do we have some discussion?
Uh, sorry, yeah, sorry about that, go ahead.
The question I have on this, uh, proposal is, is this, this is a TCEQ requirement also, is that right?
It's actually a water code requirement, um, if that answers your question. It's a statute, it's not a rule by an agency, it's a statute by the legislature.
Okay, do, do I have to do this work if I do a performance bond?
Yeah, this is totally unrelated to a performance or payment bond, that, that's something that's secured from a contractor. Um, this is necessary to support.
I think he means a revenue bond.
A revenue bond.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Use a different term, they were using performance the other night.
No, be- because an election is not required for the issuance of a revenue bond.
Yes.
An election is for a, a general obligation bond. So this is required for a GO bond election, not for a revenue bond.
Okay, thank you. So if we, if, if we do a revenue bond, we don't need to do this, we don't have to do this?
That would be correct.
Okay, if I do a revenue bond, and for some reason want to put it out for a vote of the citizens?
You have no authority to conduct an election regarding the issuance of revenue bonds.
Okay, that answers that question, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone? Okay, we have a motion.
I'm gonna vote against my own motion, based on what Tony just said, that if it's a revenue bond, it does not require this.
And, I don't wanna venture into the area of your financial advisor, I'm not sure if he's discussed with you the relative benefits of a revenue bond versus a general obligation bond, but there's some significant differences, which I'd urge you to consider in making that decision.
Yeah, we've had discussion with him about the difference.
It will cost your residents more to do a revenue bond.
We had that discussion, and very interestingly, the general manager brought up the fact that when we did our sewer bonds, we did both a revenue. I wasn't here, I shouldn't be saying we, but anyway, we did both a revenue and a tax bond. The revenue bond was less expensive, we got a better rate.
The, the interest rate was less.
The interest rate was less, got a better rate on it.
Which, that's the first one ever, right?
So, yeah, it was an interesting dynamic.
There's, yep. If you guys wanna get into that discussion, we can certainly do so, it's a very important decision.
And we do have an item next on that, if you wanna.
Do you wanna table, or table this one until we talk about number nine?
Yes, I'd like.
Okay, so you wanna retract your motion on this?
Yes.
And I'll, uh, go with that, as me being a second. So can you make a motion to table this one until after the next item? And we'll revisit it?
I think we have a motion on the table, right?
We, he just retracted.
Did he?
Yeah, floor, one.
I'll just make a second.
Yeah.
You know, take a motion to table it?
Okay, what do we have to do, Tony?
Uh, depending on the intent, he can withdraw his motion, and then the person that seconded can.
I, I withdrew it, so we're good, we don't have to vote or anything?
The person that seconded, do they concur with that?
Yes, that was me.
Okay.
Yes, okay, so we're good.
You're good.
Okay, now we need a motion to table it, correct? Or?
No, you can just come back to it.
Okay, so, okay, that's fine. Moving on, uh, do you wanna take a quick 15-minute break? Okay.
I'd take a chance.
We're gonna go to a short recess at 9:03, and let's return back at 9:15, is that okay? Everyone, 9:15, okay.
So that motion was withdrawn.
One, Miguel. Okay, it is 9:12, we're coming back a little bit early from recess, in, back into regular session. And again, 9:12. We are skipping agenda number eight, and going to nine, and we'll return to eight, a little bit later in the meeting. Uh, nine, considering take appropriate action to approve up to 8,000 for updated water system and sewer system map development by CPNY, and approve use of Gatsby reserve funds.
Okay, this was a project that we started, the board had approved funding several months ago, and, um, unfortunately, there's a lot more missing on the maps than was previously thought. A lot of developments in hole are off of them, but also a lot of the fire hydrants, valves, sewer li- on the sewer line side, there was a lot of sewers missing. So we're, we're gonna need additional funds to get those maps finalized. And, um, so staff is requesting up, to approve up to 8,000 to complete the map project, and to use funds from the Water Gatsby Reserve Fund.
Okay, do I have a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion.
Approve up to 8,000?
Yeah, that will, uh, I was gonna, to, uh, approve up to 8,000, I was for the updated water system and sewer, system map developed by CPNY, and, uh, out of the Gatsby reserve funds.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice President Wilson, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, Director Rose has the second, any discussion?
I had a question, just basically, on, the comment was that it became, it was more, more complicated or more intense than what was originally planned. So my question was, was the original contract, uh, how did, how did we get here? I mean, if the, if the original contract specified the scope of work, and the contractor agreed to that scope of work, and it becomes more difficult, he agreed to the scope of work?
Well, it, it wasn't a contractor, it was an engineer, so it was a professional service.
Okay.
Mike, I'll let you kind of explain.
Yeah, originally, they wanted to get all the DWG files and everything, which is just basically like a plug-and-play for their system.
DWG help?
That's AutoCAD drawings, drawings, and they're like dot DWG.
Yeah, that's the file extension. We dug up as many as we had, but a lot of it, they had to input manually. And they probably didn't, they didn't know that upfront, that they were gonna have to do the extent of actual manual, uh, entering of the systems, subdivisions, so that's the reason.
Okay, so, so my question is.
And the last time the maps were updated was like 2010.
Yes.
So there were a lot of missing sections on the maps. Um, it is a TCEQ requirement that the district have updated maps at all time.
I, I don't, I don't question the need, okay? I don't question the need or the requirement. I just question whether the contract covered it already, and whose responsibility it is to pick up the additional.
It, it sounds like that we were to provide certain information, and we didn't have all that information for them to go forward, so there's additional work required for them to finish their task.
Based on the fact that we didn't have the information to give them.
Right, so when we were looking for.
So that is, so in that case, it is our problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Their, their original contract, they had that they were gonna, you know, they wanted all the AutoCAD and all that stuff, and we didn't.
I don't, I don't really know when the town started. They've been doing it, I think, pretty much since I've been here, that they do require developers, once they complete a, a subdivision, they require that they give them the drawings, like electronically with the DWGs. I don't know when they started doing that, but I do know that there's a lot that, that we don't have here, that we thought we would have, and they don't exist. And so they're having to manually go draw those things on there. And I do wanna say that it was a, it wasn't a contract for, it was like an hourly not to exceed 10,000, I believe is what it was.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the reason they're not working right now, is 'cause we didn't let them exceed it, so, in, but in order to finish it. And what, what they're gonna do in the end is more than just do the, you know, the maps that we have electronically, and the big ones we can put on the wall. But they, I, I, I know in North Texas, they called it something different than Southeast Texas, but we call them key maps, where it's like a, a spiral notebook, where you open and you go to A4, and you can find a certain la- a certain street. That's what these books will end up being like, so that the guys out in the field, if they're gonna go to 123 Oakmont, they know that's on, in A5 of book 40, and they can actually see exactly what, where the line is, and, and any valves or anything that are in that area. So that's what will, will be the final product of this.
Does, does this, just out of curiosity, because I, I don't, I kinda have a fuzzy memory of this being discussed, watching it on tape or something, does this give us GPS coordinates to valves and stuff?
I do not believe so.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I thought, with that same line, I'm thinking, I thought we were doing GPS, uh, coordinates for hydrants and.
The fire department is.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Okay, uh, then I have a question on Gatsby reserves funds. How are we looking on that account, if I take $8,000 out of it?
The water has $60,000 in it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, I have a motion by, uh, Vice President Wilson and a second by Rose. And just to recap it or rephrase it, it's to approve up to, not to exceed eight thousand dollars for updated water system and sewer system map development by C P N Y and approve it, use of Gatsby reserve funds. Everybody understand that? We're going, okay. All in favor, show of hands. Okay, unanimous. Okay, do you wanna return to agenda eight at this time? Mr. Hayes?
Let me hear from Jennifer.
Okay, do you wanna return and hear?
I wanna hear what Jennifer suggests.
Okay, so we're returning to eight and then you want her to discuss eight?
I wanna hear some conversation from.
Okay, so let's, at this time, we'll return to agenda number eight. Uh, consider and take appropriate action to approve a proposal from C P N Y, Inc. to draft preliminary engineering report required for bound, bond election for water system improvements, contract number twenty sixteen, zero seven, one nine, zero two. Uh, we'll have discussion.
Okay, I think Tony gave kind of a little overview of that and I think maybe if we kind of combined eight and fourteen, maybe that would be helpful in that we could kinda talk a little bit about the bond election and the requirements. I, I don't know if that would help, but it's leaving that up to y'all. But, and I do wanna say another issue is, um, Tony has a six AM flight out of Austin in the morning, so if we could kinda cover the items that he needs to be here for, that would be helpful too.
So what I'm hearing is you wanna combine eight and fourteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me ask this question, Jennifer. Is it your suggestion that we, uh, do this, uh, bond election for, on tax-based bonds only? We don't need election on revenue bonds.
That's correct. And, and I, I think, I think where, um, Jim was a little confused earlier, the, um, the, the line that we are doing, the revenue bonds through the SWIFT funding, that is not something that we're considering in the, in this item. That's a separate issue. So this is only, that's a revenue bond that's already been, you know, basically approved by the board. It has been approved and, and once we get the commitment for the funding, we'll move forward with that. So that's totally separate. And that's the line, and I, I know it just gets confusing because it's like all at once, we're doing all these Fort Worth lines. But it's the line from the Taylor Tank to the, uh, Westlake, uh, pump station off three seventy-seven. That's the SWIFT funding revenue bond. And that's not what we're discussing in this item tonight. What eight and fourteen are talking about are the board-directed staff over the past few months to bring forward information about a bond election in November. And the amount that you told us to look for, look at was eighteen million. And the eighteen million was to cover three projects. One, the, uh, line from the pump station over to the East Elevated Storage Tank, the, the one Bill was just talking about earlier that'll run through P D thirty.
Can you add the dollar amounts for each one of those, please?
Yes, and that's about two million. Then the, the second project, and, and this is in no specific order, okay? Um, although, well, really, the two million is kinda the first one, but the others are in no specific order. Um, is thirteen million for the water line, twenty-four inch water line, then from where the, the line that we're doing with the SWIFT funding that ends at Westlake's pump station, picking up there and coming to our meter vault out here. That's estimated at thirteen million. So now we're at fifteen million. And then the third project was the ground storage tank, an additional ground storage tank out here in this area, and that's an estimated three million, which made up the eighteen million dollar bond projects that you all told us to be looking at. Now, I wanna say a couple of things and I think Tony will probably have things to add.
Okay, before we get, Tony, right now, we're on agenda eight. It's been, uh, recommended that we can consi- uh, roll it to fourteen.
Like they're, they're interrelated.
Right, so in order to do that, can I just introduce agenda fourteen and say we're gonna be, discuss both of them?
Sure.
Okay, I'd rather do that before we go any further.
Sure.
And then when we make a motion, we can make a motion as in what it says in eight and make it in fourteen, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so let me introduce fourteen for right now. Uh, consider and take appropriate action regarding potential November eighth, twenty sixteen bond election to fund water system improvement projects. Okay, and Tony, you have a report on that, is that correct?
Yes, and we're not asking the board to call an election tonight. Um, and if I can back up real briefly, um, bond elections can only be conducted on, on two dates per year, what are known as uniform election dates. And those are in May of each year and November of each year. The deadline for the board to adopt an order calling the November bond election would be August twenty-second next month. In order to adopt an order calling the election, the board needs to know the amount of the bond authorization that it's seeking from the voters and would put before the voters. So with respect to agenda item eight, that preliminary engineering report, one of the key purposes of that item is to identify both the hard costs, the facilities, et cetera, also some of the soft costs, costs of issuing, underwriters discount, um, um, attorney general fees, T C key fees, and it's to come to a bottom line number, which will then be included in your, um, order calling the bond election, which, if you go forward with the November election, I think would be considered at your next meeting. So the purpose of the item number eight is to authorize your consulting engineers to prepare, um, a preliminary engineering report which identifies the proposed improvements, costs in hard and soft, which would then be incorporated into the election order. That bond election is only securing voter authorization. You are not approving any specific facilities. It's based on the best information that's in effect today. And obviously, many times, as you indicated before, bonds are issued in multiple series over decades and the circumstances and needs may change. There may be water supply sources from other purveyors that weren't identified at the time an election is called. And if you look at the draft proposition that's in your package, it's what's known as a, a system facilities proposition. So as your circumstances change in the future, you may not go forward with the twenty-four inch line. You may go forward with the twenty inch line. Uh, you may not go forward with the line at all. This is to secure voter authorization to issue general obligation tax bonds in the future, but it's, you're not bound by any specific, um, improvements and you won't be making those decisions. Instead, it's based on the best information that's available to you at, at the time you seek voter approval and that changes. In terms of your final decisions, whether to issue bonds, that's not being done tonight or next month. Um, if the proposition is submitted to the voters, if a majority of your voters approve that, in the future, the board will make the individual decisions whether or not to go forward with the issuance of bonds at any given time and how much those bonds will be. And it will be based on the updated information about what facilities the board wants to construct based on much more detailed engineering analysis, which will be undertaken at that point in time. The final decisions about design capacities, et cetera, that will be done later and, at the time you're making decisions, whether to issue bonds and specifically to authorize the final design of projects and, and, and solicitation of bids for construction. The purpose of the preliminary engineering report is to support a bond election, which secures voter approval based on the best information that's available today. But a final decision as to the issuance of bonds and construction of facilities isn't done until a, a later point. Um, unfortunately, from a timing perspective, again, because of that August twenty-second deadline, um, if you don't take action tonight or in the next thirty days, you'll be bumped to that next uniform election date next May if you decide to go forward with general obligation bonds and seeking voter approval. Um, I'd.
That calendar is on page two eighty-six, by the way.
Okay. Um, in terms of revenue versus general obligation bonds, and this is more appropriate for your financial advisor than your bond counsel, um, it's extraordinary unusual if that, if in fact your revenue bonds were, had a lower interest rate. I think most FAs would tell you that, um, general obligation bonds are between two hundred and five hundred basis points lower from an interest perspective. There's also, the interest is ta- tax deductible. That's not the case with revenue bonds. And then you guys are unique in your situation in terms of, um, customers versus your tax base. You have a tax base that includes certain areas you don't serve, so that's another issue you need to take into account in making a decision.
Tony, can I also interject to, um, another issue, a cost that's involved with revenue bonds versus tax bonds, and I wanted to point this out last time we had this discussion, is the revenue bonds have a reserve requirement. It's a bond covenant. And we're required, you have up to sixty months, but you have to put away one year, one average, the annual average debt service payment of, for one year. You have sixty months to put that away. So for example, right now, for the, uh, for the wastewater plant, we're, we have to budget for and collect an additional ten thousand dollars a month, correct? So roughly, a little over ten thousand a month, so hundred and thirty thousand-ish a year. For five years, we have to put that away. And that has to stay put away until, for the life of the bond. So that's a, that's something different in revenue bonds that's required, that's not required in tax bonds.
And your bond resolution for revenue bonds will also include what's called a coverage requirement, which constru- controls when you can issue subsequent debt. And typically, it's a one point ten or one point twenty coverage requirement. So you have to secure more revenues than your annual debt service and able, to be able to issue subsequent bonds. It's a way of protecting the outstanding bondholders, but obviously, it impacts your revenues and what your customers pay.
So as Tony's saying, right now, our rates have a bond, have a bond coverage of one point two, right?
I thought it was one point one.
One point one, okay. One point one. And so we have to basically set our rates ten percent higher than our expenses to make sure that our rates are set high enough to, to meet our bond covenant. So, so those are costs that I just wanna point out that are applicable to a revenue bond that are not applicable to a tax bond. And because I, I did say, and that is true, that our, one, one time ever, the revenue bond was actually lower than the tax bond, but it was all to do with the timing of the, the rates and all of that. But in the end, I'm not saying it was cheaper because there are additional costs associated with it.
Okay, Mr. Rose, you have a question?
Uh, the, uh, I believe, have to get into paperwork, but I believe the payment based on the original bond proposal is gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So if I have five years to put that away, that means I need to put away thirty thousand dollars a year, right? And as far as spend, no? Is that not right?
No.
Fifteen, fifteen divided by.
It's not, it's not the first, maybe I misunderstood what you were saying, but you take the average, like if you're, whatever your bond payment is for the twenty years, you take an average year's bond payment and you have sixty months to put that away. So it's not a hundred and fifty, it's much more than that.
No, it would be, you would be putting, if you have to reach the total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside over six, over sixty months, five years.
Are you talking about the wastewater bond revenue?
No, I'm talking about water. Cause we had the document that.
Uh, okay, I'm sorry. You're saying if we issued a revenue bond for the two million dollars. Okay, now I understand.
Well, not two million for.
Whatever amount.
I think that number was eighteen that was in it. That wasn't, cause we're talking about doubling our tax rate.
On the nu- uh, just as a, something, an example for you, on the nine point two million revenue bonds we just had, our number that we have to put away over the five-year period is six hundred. Six ninety-one, six hundred and ninety-one thousand. So almost seven hundred thousand on a nine million dollar bond. That's how much we have to put away.
Is, is it only, uh, this put away only applicable to revenue, not tax?
Only applicable to revenue. Yes.
Did that answer your question, Director Rose?
Well, yeah, I think you're drop dead, Tony, for, uh, voting on the magnitude of the tax bond. You know, that's, the one, we've been talking about eighteen million. When do we have, when's our last chance?
This last chance to adopt that order calling the election, which will be the document that specifies the amount of the bond authorization, is August twenty-second.
Okay.
I'm pulling out my.
And it, and it sounds like, Jennifer.
Oh, that is a two fifty. Only the two, yeah, right. So it's gonna be much larger.
Okay, uh, Director.
Number nine, going back to number nine here.
Okay, let, uh, we're not, okay, nine already voted.
We withdrew the nine.
No, that was eight.
No, we approved nine.
Oh, eight, eight, okay, eight.
Well, let, uh, Vice President Wilson had a question.
Yeah, I guess I was gonna make a statement. You mentioned on the revenue bonds that we'd have to set our revenue to be ten percent more than, uh, our costs. Uh, on that coverage ratio, that's more related to ensuring that you can make the payments. And so if you issue revenue bonds that were, uh, that didn't come close to, um, it's basically making sure you have free cash flow to make the payments and above that. So it doesn't necessarily mean that you have to set your costs to be ten percent more. If your revenue bond is, I don't know, be silly, but let's say a million, but you had ten million dollars in revenue, you wouldn't necessarily have to charge, increase your rates ten percent to cover it because your revenue would already cover it.
Yeah, it's re- it's actually a test.
Depreciation.
It's actually a test for the issuance of additional bonds. And the theory is that you wanna make sure your outstanding bondholders are protected before the issuer issues more debt. And if there isn't enough revenues there to cover both the existing debt and the new debt, there's a problem, particularly for the existing ones. So that coverage test says you are not allowed to issue additional debt unless your revenues are at least, in this case, one point, one, one point one times your, um, average annual debt service.
Yeah, and, and I only want to make that clarification because, uh, and maybe I misunderstood you, but it seemed like you were saying that you had to, your revenue, it had, you had to increase your rates, uh, a hundred, or ten percent more than your costs in order to cover it. And I was, okay, and that's what I was saying.
If I said that, I'm sorry. And it's, and it's also less depreciation. So it's even, it can be less than that.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure that we're clear there.
Director Hayes had something to come back on.
Yeah, uh, I believe the situation is this. We, we have the next meeting, I believe it's the second ninth, sixteenth, something like August sixteenth.
August sixteenth is our next meeting, yes.
So that's well in front of the August twenty-second. So given that situation, I, I don't have any motion to make at this time.
That only gives them six days to put with Tony.
Yeah, that's the point I was going to make, which is that preliminary engineering report is necessary in order for the board to be able to take action before the twenty-second. So if the board wanted the flexibility to adopt an order calling the election on the sixteenth of August, then my recommendation would be that you authorize that preliminary engineering report to go forward so that you have an amount to include in that election order. If you, that engineering report isn't undertaken, I don't think you'll know the amount of the bond, um, authorization, um, to be sought. And so I don't think you'll make that election date.
Okay, I'm going, I'm going to, uh.
Wait, we still got discussion? Director Rose, you got anything else?
I think I've probably said this before and I think everyone's, on the board's aware of it. I spent five years on the town council and for five years, I listened to people say, no, cut my taxes. Cut my tax rate. I'm not interested in paying any more taxes. What this does is doubles our tax rate. I cannot and will not support a tax bond. I can support a revenue bond. A revenue bond costs are spread across our customer base based on their use of our services. I don't have a problem with that. As to the amount, I fully understand the need for the line running down one fourteen to the east tank. That is in my mind, I got no idea when Mr. Beck's gonna put his part of the project in the ground, but that project needs to go forward. That, to me, is a. That, to me, is a time front-end situation. The rest of this project, the line, the, the parallel line, I think I'm gonna support it. But I'm only gonna support it as a revenue bond.
Okay, when you say double the tax rate, could you tell us what you're?
Sure.
And again, the eighteen million, doubling the tax rate, and correct me if I'm wrong, cause I don't have the chart in front of me, but that's if you sell the total eighteen million. Is that correct?
But, but that would be, the, the chart showed happening in year twenty twenty, we're currently at a tax rate of five point four two. In twenty twenty, the tax rate goes to eleven point, eleven point seven five.
And, and that's true, Bill, that, can I show you, this is based on if we issued the two million and twenty, sorry, I can't read that, twenty seventeen.
Ten million and twenty eighteen.
Ten million and twenty eighteen, and six in twenty nineteen. So that's how that would go across.
And, and my point still is, I don't, I do not see Geo bonds as fair to our customer base. I don't. And so, I mean, that's, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I look at, and I, I know what you're saying, but I look at, okay, you're, you're looking at it like if you sell everything at once. There's nothing that prevents you three years from now going, I don't authorize the additional selling of the bonds for that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, this bond is water-related projects only.
Yes.
Okay, you can't use it for sewer or build a building or something like that unless it's related to water, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, are you, is that it?
I was, I was just gonna say, if you do revenue bonds, you can do them with each individual project. As we go along.
But they're more costly, we already?
We don't know that.
Go ahead.
I guess, two things, one, in my opinion, one of the benefits of the Geo bond is that your voters make the decision. So it's gonna be up to them to decide whether or not they want the tax and, what, what I would say is the benefits or some drawbacks, cause it's based on your AV and not on your usage, which is a valid point. With the revenue bonds, it's only based on the decision of five individuals. In terms of the amount of the bonds, that, tax, tax bonds are also issued on an incremental basis and series.
I was about to say, you don't have to do them all at one time.
Generally, you don't do it in less than a million dollars, but.
And then the revenues have a, a timeline, right? The most you can go, or what's the time?
No, it's all based on the coverage test that we were talking about in the rates.
Water and sewer rates to go, is that?
Okay, yeah, okay.
As long as you have the revenue to cover it, right.
Any more discussion? So I'll entertain a motion on agenda number eight.
In order not to preclude any decision we might make before the twenty-second of August, and based on the advice of Tony, that we need to get started on the updated water system, no, eight rather, to draft preliminary engineering report required for a bond election, I make the following motion. I would like to, well, let me start over. I would like to make a motion to draft, have CPNY draft preliminary engineering report required for a bond election for water system improvements, contract number twenty sixteen zero seven one nine oh two.
Okay, was there a dollar amount on that that we had?
Previously, I think you said not to exceed twelve five.
Twelve five, yeah.
Not to exceed twelve five.
I thought there was, do you mind adding that to your motion?
Yes, I'll add that not to exceed twelve thousand five hundred.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the, the proposal for CPNY to draft the preliminary engineering report required for bond election for water system improvements, contract number twenty sixteen zero seven one nine oh two, not to exceed twelve thousand five hundred, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion was made by Director Hayes, seconded by Vice President Wilson. In favor, show of hands. Jim? Okay, I have Director Hayes, Vice President Wilson, and myself, and all opposed. Director Rose opposing, it passes. Okay, fourteen, we still have that open, and I don't think we need to take any action on that, is that correct?
That's correct. We will, based on the results of the engineering study, insert the cost information into the draft election order, and I think that will be can, put before you on the sixteenth of August, and at that time the board can make the final decision whether or not to go forward with the bond election.
That comes from our financial advisor.
It's gonna be both the financial advisor and your engineers. The cost of issuance will be from the FA, and the engineers will give the, the engineering and hard costs.
Okay, for the scorecard, there's no action on fourteen. We took care of eight, so now we're returning back to the regular scheduled program. It's regular session, agenda number ten. And that.
Excuse me?
Oh, yeah, sorry about that, did, what other items did Tony have to be here for?
Um, if, I have no kind of update or anything for the closed session items that are on the agenda, so unless somebody has a reason to do executive session, we can not do that.
Can't do an executive session without an attorney.
Right, that's, that's why I'm saying, if we want to do that, but I have.
I don't, I don't have anything and stuff.
You could call me if you needed to, I can participate by phone.
Okay, or we could do that.
I'll be on the highway for a while.
Okay, so is there anything else Tony needs to be here for?
I don't have anything, you all may want to glance and see if you have any legal questions.
And I'm happy to say.
What about, what about twelve, do we need him for that or anything, since it deals with?
Yeah, he could be here for that, although he, he reviewed it.
Okay, let's just do twelve real quick.
Let's just skip to it.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna skip ten and eleven and go to agenda number twelve. Consider and take appropriate action to approve resolution twenty sixteen dash zero seven one nine, expressing the district's official intent to reimburse with proceeds of revenue bonds issued through the State Water Implementation Fund for Texas, otherwise known as SWIFT, to fi- finance improvements to obtain additional water supply from the city of Fort Worth deemed necessary to provide water service to customers of the district.
And, so we've just switched gears and we're now talking about the SWIFT bonds. And with respect to this item.
All because of you, Tony.
Okay, I apologize. Under federal tax regulations, in order for an issuer such as the district to reimburse itself with bond proceeds, it's required to adopt a resolution expressing its intent to reimburse itself, and there's some requirements in terms of how, how long the reimbursement can take place, depending on the expenditure, eighteen months or thirty-six months. So the purpose of this is to give the board and the district the flexibility, if it so desires, to utilize its operating funds today on the project and then reimburse itself with the bond proceeds when and if they're issued.
And I will add that we will soon be receiving an invoice from the city of Fort Worth to pay the engineering on this project. And since we rarely get really good news, I will announce that we got really good news on this, that where originally it was estimated that the engineering was, our share of the engineering was gonna be about four hundred and fifty thousand. They were able to do some negotiations with the engineering firm and with the, the reduced costs. And it, right now, it's expected to be about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, our share for the engineering, although that doesn't include some inspections and inspection fees and some, some possible easement acquisitions, but that's basically almost half what we expected, so that was really good news. But we will be getting an invoice for that, so if we're gonna want to reimburse those costs from the SWIFT funding once we get it, that's why it's important we, we approve the resolution tonight.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for this item.
I move, let's see, we're on twelve, I move to approve resolution number twenty sixteen dash zero seven one nine.
Okay. I have a motion by Director Rose. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Vice President Wilson, any discussion?
Real quickly, I have an attorney question here. Section five says at the very end.
Can you tell me what page you're on?
Well, I'm on page two sixty-four, but I'll turn my computer here so you can look at it. I would, it's gone. I love this computer. The very last sentence on five says, "To the best of our knowledge, this board is not aware of the previous adoption of official intents by the district that have been, that have been made as a matter of course for the purpose of reimbursing expenditures and for which tax-exempt obligations have not been issued." What does that say?
That is intended to stop governmental entities from, and I'll make, exaggerate a little bit, from monthly adopting these resolutions. And so they kind of keep a running ability to reimburse themselves if and when they issue bonds. The, the purpose of that language is to make sure if you do this, there's a project that's for real, and you intend to reimburse yourself, and you're not gonna adopt a practice of every day, every month, we're going to adopt a resolution. So if and when we issue bonds, we're always gonna be able to pay ourselves back from bond proceeds and not use operating funds.
Okay, because I'm sure that we did, I'm sure that the board did that for the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, but not as a matter of course, you don't have a regular practice of doing so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I have a motion by Director Rose to approve resolution twenty sixteen dash zero seven one nine. I have a second by Vice President Wilson. All in favor, show of hands. Are you unanimous? Okay. Does it, anyone else have anything else for Tony? Tony, thank you very much.
I appreciate you guys.
Drive safe.
I will, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, now we're gonna go back to item, agenda number ten. It is, consider and take appropriate action to approve permanent installation of I-beams of, of, over aerial sewer crossings near wastewater treatment plant by Raymar Construction in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand three seventy-nine and fund project with Gatsby Reserve Funds, contract number twenty sixteen zero seven one nine zero four three.
Um, when we did the emergency repair of the aerial sewer crossing as a part of the project, we had to buy these two large I-beams that, that stretch across. We purchased them. So they're, they're, they're still just kind of laying there, but in order to really protect the line from, or potentially protect the line from the, the tree that's, looks like it could fall anytime, or other branches, um, we, we went out there and we talked about it with Kevin, the engineer, and with the contractor. And we all agree that it, if we're gonna actually use that for that purpose, the, the I-beams need to be secured and kind of moved around to be straight and are, and closer together to block the tree off the line and secured to the ground. And so that i- is the cost that the contractor has given us to do that. It's not including purchasing the I-beams because we've already purchased those, so that, that's already done.
Just labor.
It's just labor, but on this side, the, the sewer plant side of the, the line, the bank, we can use small machinery in the, in the easement, but on the other side, it all has to be hand dug and it has to be done because the Corps won't allow us to do any kind of equipment movement over there, so.
You mean we can't use shovels? They literally have to use their hands?
No, they can use shovels, I think, but.
I'm just thinking.
I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say I took hand dug as, with a shovel, but that's a good question with the Corps. They could have literally meant with their, their hands, I don't know.
We have an easement over there, right?
We have an easement that runs through the, yes, that runs across there.
What's it cost us to clear that entire easement out and put a road in? Never mind, keep going.
Yeah, the Corps won't let you touch a tree, I mean, we had a problem.
It's in my easement.
Yeah.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, this is, I, I actually struggled with, I really thought about just waiting and including this in the, in the budget for next fiscal year. The, the issue is I can't really predict when the next flood may come along and the tree looks like any good flood could just wash it on out. So I guess it's a matter of you all, again, measuring the risk because the, the I-beams are there, they're not really gonna protect the, the crossing right now, but I felt like you all should at least have the opportunity, because we do have Gatsby funds available and we could use that and go ahead and get this done before winter gets here, when we might see more, more flooding and that sort of thing.
The soil will be soft in the wintertime for them to do this, so it's probably best now that they bring in the heavy equipment to, you know, move while the soil's hard.
On our side, yes, so. So, I, it, it's not an emergency repair, is kind of what my, my point is.
Preventive care.
It's preventative emergency repair, I guess. So, because right now the, the line is still somewhat exposed to the possibility of the, the tree or even a branch falling and causing another crack in the, the sewer line. Although it is now a, a much better pipe, it's not the old concrete pipe. So I think, I think it's gonna take more than a large branch, but I, I don't know, I, I can't promise you anything with that.
Okay, we had a staff update, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the permanent installation of I-beams over aerial sewer crossing near the wastewater treatment plant by Raymar Construction in amount not to exceed eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and to fund the project with Gatsby reserves. If I get a second?
Could you mention a contract number, please?
Okay, contract number twenty sixteen oh seven nineteen oh four three.
Thank you. And we have a motion by Director Rose, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Director Hayes to, on agenda ten, all in favor, show of hands?
Short discussions.
Oh, discussions, sorry.
Short, uh, one, that, uh, Gatsby Reserve Fund's gonna be coming out of wastewater, correct?
We, we do not have sewer Gatsby funds, replacement fund, we have water, only water.
So this is just Gatsby general reserve funds?
These are specific to, we have water replacement, we have the, the town's elevated tank. And we have IT. Is that it? I've got it down here.
So how am I funding this out of Gatsby reserve funds?
It would be out of the water Gatsby reserve fund.
Right, it would have to come out of water. And then we have the fire that we're gonna be using for down there, so.
So this is gonna come out of, this is gonna come out of water.
Shouldn't be anything in the fire.
No, this is, this is coming out of water.
Come out of fire, no.
We have almost fifty-one thousand in IT replacement that I guess we could use.
Okay, let's, if you don't mind amending the motion to be more specific on the Gatsby fund. And staff, please, let us know which one do you want to pull it out of? Which is the better one? IT?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, Miss Director Rose, do you want to?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna amend my motion to have it funded out of IT reserve funds?
Technology replacement.
Funded out of technology replacement funds?
Okay, the second, Director Hayes, do you?
I agree.
Agree? Okay, we can vote on.
I have a quick question for them.
I have two, go ahead.
Okay.
What, um, those Gatsby funds for IT, what were they designed to, uh, fund, and then are we going to replace that as we go into our next, next fiscal year to replace what we took in addition to the additional reserve?
Actually, no, there's been a change in the way we budget for IT. Previously, when we were, when our IT was through the town, we budgeted through Gatsby for IT needs, but when we split off from the town's IT and got our own IT contractor, now we just fund any IT hardware needs through the annual budgeting process. We're not funding it through Gatsby, and so this was just the remainder of what we had had from previous years.
So could we take the money and just roll it into the general fund versus just having to do this on a periodic basis?
Well, we hadn't had to do this previously, but we certainly can move it back into general fund.
You tell us what.
That was my question, that, I mean, that doesn't impact.
That was my question, that, I mean, that doesn't impact this motion, so that was the question I wanted to answer.
Okay, you have something, Mr. Rose?
Well, one, I wanted to ask if this was an engineered project, in other words, do we know how deep we're going with those pilings to support these, to support these I-beams? Because I'll tell you, my experience having been out there, they didn't look very secure at the time.
No, they're, they're not at this time, they're not secured really at all much. Um, Mike, you wanna kind of explain to him?
Yeah, I mean, that's the whole point of this is, you know, digging down, putting a big concrete frame, and I, I don't, I don't, I think actually, maybe were they gonna strap that pipe down on that concrete block? I don't remember, there's been so many engineered drawings I've seen, but it's actually big concrete forms on both sides and actually mounting the beams on there.
Right.
Securing the beams to it, so if anything ever does come down.
Well, it, the only thing I had to go by was this, uh, the, the description here, uh, appear in column B two, looks like two and a half feet by two and a half feet by six foot. So my question was, is somebody engineered or did somebody go out with a matchbook and go, this looks about right?
I think Kevin, Kevin looked at this.
Kevin, if Kevin looked at it, then, then good, okay.
I would suggest maybe that we reclass the IT replacement, the fifty thousand eight ninety-two fifty-eight to sewer replacement.
Okay, but that's not on the agenda, we probably, probably can't do that tonight, so we'll probably have to.
Okay.
So we'll probably have to leave the motion the way it is, as well.
Yeah, we have a motion to use the IT Gatsby reserve funds, is that correct, Mr. Rose?
No, I believe that's what I was told, yes.
Okay, the second agreed to it, so we can just vote on that motion, is that correct?
I would say yes.
Okay, uh, all in favor, show of hands? Okay, unanimous? Staff understand, IT reserve funds, okay. Eleven, moving on, "Consider and take appropriate action to approve proposal from MCCI for electronic records management system in an amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand point seven five." Really, point seven five? And authorize general manager to execute contract effective October first, twenty sixteen, contract number twenty sixteen zero seven one nine zero four. And just be, before we go into this, the contract numbers, the reason why we're doing it is because of the House, uh, passed a ruling, is that correct?
Yes, it has to do with this Form twelve ninety-five. That we're required to give a contract number to anyone that we're gonna, that you all may consider entering into a contract with. And thank you actually for mentioning that, because I will tell you that all of these contracts that you see on here with the contract numbers, I have received the twelve ninety-five forms, and if there are any that are approved by the board, I will go online and, and approve those contracts. So they've all registered with that twelve ninety-five form. But that is the purpose of these contract numbers that you see on the agenda now, so that we can give the vendor a contract number, they can go register, do this, and then submit, send to me this twelve ninety-five form, and then once a contract's approved by the board, I go and approve it on the ethics, um, website.
Okay, do you want to give an update on agenda item eleven, please?
Sure, what this is, um, we were given notice that the records management system that we use, Winocular, will no longer be supported. So we, um, put together an RF, uh, RFP and, um, the, the one that we are, um, submitting for approval tonight is from MCCI. Their product is called Laser Fish, and it is the same product that all the surrounding entities to us are using. So, um, one of the benefits of that is that if, uh, if it's someone in the town of Trophy Club and they're, they, they're used to using this product on the town's website, then it will be easy for them to use it on our website as well. Um, so the thirty-seven thousand that we're requesting is to.
Seventy-five cents.
And seventy-five cents is very important. Um, they, it, it is kind of a not to exceed amount, or it is a not to exceed amount. Um, let me go to the pricing page, the majority of that is, um, kind of a hard cost, which is the cost of, um, the purchase of the software and installation.
What page are you on?
Um, if you go to page two forty-five in your packet, this is the pricing table, and it shows kind of a three-year cost. The total acquisition and implementation cost for year one is the thirty-seven thousand and seventy-five cents. But about eighty-three sixty of that, I believe, let me go down. To page. The, the total project cost for the purchase and installation of the product is twenty-eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars and seventy-five cents. That's where the seventy-five cents comes from, so it, that is a hard cost.
I think that's a Coke the guy's gonna drink while he's working.
Maybe, not from here, 'cause our cokes don't cost a dollar now, I think. Um, then the other part of this is another eight thousand three hundred and sixty dollars is a not to exceed amount to actually convert the Winocular documents that we have onto this system, so we don't have to redo every document manually that's already out there.
I was gonna ask if this included data migration.
Yes. Um, and they believed, since they've already done this recently with the town, um, they felt like that was a pretty good cost for us, that it, it is a good not to exceed cost. So that eighty-three sixty plus the twenty-eight six forty seventy-five is how we got to the thirty-seven thousand seventy-five cents.
Okay, on the migration part, I know that on the towns, and that, I think they might have it fixed now, but there's some documents that were just like all garbled up. So they assure that they're gonna have good, you know, transfer of data?
I have never had a software company ever promise me that it was going to be a complete, smooth transition of data. But they've, as a software company says, they feel very sure it will be somewhat.
Successful.
Successful, thank you, that was the term they used.
Okay.
Please, Kevin, it's not contractual. It's only required to be somewhat successful. Every other document will be there.
Okay, anybody, is there a motion? Anyone want to make a motion?
And again, um, this is not something we will start till, until after October first, we, if this is approved, it will actually be budgeted in the budget for next year. And we will e- execute the contract a little later to be effective October first.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for MCCI for the electronic records management system in amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand seventy-five dollars and authorize the general manager to execute the contract effective October first, twenty sixteen, contract number twenty sixteen zero seven nineteen zero four.
Thank you, you have a motion by Vice President Wilson, do I have a second?
I believe he said thirty-seven thousand seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
Well, if I did, I'll amend that to say thirty-seven thousand seventy-five cents.
Yeah, I think he did say.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not to exceed thirty-seven thousand point seventy-five cents. Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, second by Director Hayes, any discussion?
Very quickly, I have a question. Discussion that this is gonna be in next year's budget? Was it included in next year's rates?
Yes.
We included an amount for our software, but I think it was about thirty-eight thousand.
Okay, it's already in the rates?
The rates will drop, okay?
Well, it was included at thirty thousand, so this is seven thousand more than what we had initially done that.
We just included an amount of thirty thousand because we did not have the, the pricing at that time.
Make a note that Kevin was wrong, we have to raise rates to cover the seven thousand dollars.
That's right. We'll take out IT Gatsby.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah, yeah.
Director Hayes seconded it, any more discussion?
Oh.
Okay, show of hands, all in favor? Uh, it's unanimous, okay, moving on. Uh, twelve, "Consider and take appropriate action."
Passed twelve already.
Oh, twelve, you're right, I didn't look down from my cross mark, okay, thirteen. We're on agenda item thirteen, that's why you're sitting next to me.
Yes.
Mayor Protem doesn't help that, okay, just to make a note there.
Figurehead.
Yeah, okay. Uh, thirteen, "Consider and take appropriate." "Consider and take appropriate action to approve interlocal agreement for utility billing services with the town of Trophy Club with an effective date of October one, twenty sixteen." Staff update?
Okay, um, this agreement was approved last month to be sent over to the town, which it was. And, um, they did have a couple of changes. Um, if you go to, the agreement starts on page two sixty-eight in your packet. And the changes in the service fee section, um, was changed to, it is hereby agreed and understood that any increase to the billing rate here and, here and above set forth must be mutually agreed upon by both parties, was how it was changed to. Um, the next change was, instead of one day for the dist, I'm sorry, for the town to give us notice on the, the charges for a new commercial account drainage fees, um, they increased that to five business days. And I, um, hold on, I think that was maybe one more, yes, there's one more.
Two seventy.
In section eight, wait, I'm sorry, what?
Page two seventy.
Page two seventy-eight, two seventy, section eight.
Yes, um, changed to add for any insert related to the district. That, that's the only type of, the, the billing, the town can put, include any kind of billing insert that they want to into the, um, bills at their cost, of course, but if it's, has anything related to the district, it then has to be approved by the general manager of the district before it's inserted in the bill. And I believe that's all the changes, it was just three very minor changes. Yes, so if everyone is agreeable to those changes, it could just be reapproved as it's shown in the red line.
I make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement for utility billing services with the town of Trophy Club with effective date of October first, twenty sixteen.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice President Wilson, do I have a second? I'll second it. Okay, a motion by Vice President Wilson, second by myself, any discussion? No discussion? Okay, show of hands, all in favor? That's unanimous? Okay. Let's see, we're on fifteen now, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, "Discussion regarding status of appeal of retail water and sewer rates pending with the Public Utility Commission of Texas." Update?
Um, I really don't have any update, other than finance, do y'all have the monthly financial update on the costs?
We have, um, spent so far eighty-five thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents. Uh, the amount left in the retainer is, um, Pam received, uh, something from New Gen and they requested that the retainer be increased.
Yes, and that, I was just gonna say, that will be brought back next month for, or will be brought here next month for board approval.
Okay, so right now, the balance left in the retainer is seventy-seven thousand three eighty-three ninety-three. That does not include any increase, that's what the retainer is right now.
Okay, and that includes all invoices that we have?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any outstanding accruals to that invoice received?
This is everything.
That's everything, okay.
Okay, there's no action on this thing, uh, any more discussion on it? No one? Okay. You have anything else, Jim, for on there?
No, I have nothing.
Terry? Renee, Lori, Mike, no one, okay? We're moving on to sixteen. "Consider and take appropriate action regarding the June twenty sixteen combined financial and variance report." Just wanna take a moment to silence it, I don't have to do this anymore. Mr. Hayes?
Unfortunately, I do. I, um, met with, uh, Terry and, uh, give me a hint.
Renee?
It's, I don't like these late meetings. Anyway, uh, we didn't see anything, I didn't see anything, uh, out of the ordinary, so I make a motion to approve the combined financials and variance report.
For, can you state June twenty sixteen, please?
June twenty sixteen.
Okay, so motion to approve the June twenty sixteen combined financials and variance report. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Vice President Wilson seconds it, discussion?
Quick question, on page three oh four. Fund balance? Unassigned fund balance, general fund, two million dollars.
You talking about page three oh four on the.
Yeah, three oh four. I think that's still in that same sheet.
Yeah, that's balance sheet, yep.
Yeah. We have an unassigned fund balance of two million dollars?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Jim, Greg?
Yeah.
Oh, I have one more, real quickly.
Okay.
Uh, page, uh, three eighty. This is under the variance, publication books and subscriptions, uh, AWWA standards. What are we getting? Are we gonna, that won't, that won't purchase a whole set, but.
No, we get, um, updates, as they do updates to them, we get, we have a subscription and we receive updates.
Do we have a set? A complete set of AWWA standard books?
Yes, and I think that money is just for like the update.
Just for the updates, I have some in my box.
Where, where do they hide it? We have a library?
No, they're actually in our map room.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
No.
You have a library card?
No, but I know where I can go read now.
We have a motion and we have a second, is that correct? I kind of lost my thought there for a second.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, come on.
I want to clarify something real quick on that. The AWWA standards are like volumetric, okay? We have, I believe, a complete set of water, I don't even know that we have the sewer related, but I know we have water.
Well, yeah, there may be some sewer, but it's.
I think they're, but it's mostly the water.
But that doesn't include the M one.
No, the M one is that, those are manuals, those aren't the actual standards books, but, um, I was gonna tell you, you can re-borrow my M one. I'm almost through with it, but you can have it back soon.
Okay, thanks.
Did you ever Google this?
No.
I have a motion by, uh, Director Hayes and a second by Vice President Wilson. And all in favor, show of hands? Okay, unanimous? Okay, seventeen, agenda seventeen, "Consider and take appropriate action regarding amendments to district ethics policies and provide direction to staff related thereto." Uh, just as a note, Director Thomas could not make tonight's meeting and he requested this be tabled to the next month. So that's just a note, anyone wanna make a motion or discuss this, I guess, because we're.
I make a motion to table the, this, uh, consider and take action on the district ethics policy, uh, and provide directions to staff to a later meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion by Vice President Wilson, a second by Director Rose, any discussion? I'd like to see with this item, uh, meeting procedures added to that if possible. Is that possible to add that?
It may be on an order for the discussion.
Okay, I, I agree with you, I didn't know, because in, in the ethics policy, it actually has a procedure program, so we could actually break it out.
Yeah.
If we had to, okay.
When we get, when we get to that, I have, yeah.
I was gonna say, in the, there is a section, well.
Okay.
I've pretty much been chopping it apart to trim it down to, to see if that's how more y'all wanted it, but it, and I can't remember if it's chopped out or if I left it in there, but I can fix it if it was chopped out. But there was a section on meeting procedures that you all may want to consider.
I think we need to change the title of it to district policy or something like that.
We'll, right now, the motion is to table, we have a motion to table, a second, any discussion? None? Yes?
No.
Okay, show of hands? For favor?
For more.
Okay, unanimous? Okay, number eighteen, "Director, update on classes attended at AWBD Summer Conference held in Fort Worth." Uh, Director Wilson, you attended, Director. These, uh, Director Wilson, you attended, Director Rose and myself.
Director Thomas.
Do you have any comments on that?
Uh, I, I, I just have one question. Um, how do we handle PCI compliance, uh, in the district? Uh, payment card industry compliance. Uh, we take a, I would imagine, a large number of credit card transactions and, uh, I would imagine that.
First of all, the ones that come online, we're not responsible for, cause we don't get that data. It's all handled through our software provider. They're the ones, well, there's an intermediate between them and us, but they're the ones responsible for that. Now, we do have a credit card machine at the front desk, um, and with the new chip technology related to the PCI compliance, um, the company, who is that that we use for that? For the payments we get from the swipe one. Um, they are taking the responsibility because the reader we have is not chip compliant yet, and so if there is an issue relating to the, to that, they will take the fine if we were to get fined for that. And I do have that somewhere from them, a discussion where that was, cause that was one of the questions when that new chip technology came online. So they're working to get their machines updated and then when it is ready, they will send us a new machine.
What, a curiosity question, what percentage of transactions go through that? If you don't know, just?
If I had to guess, and it would simply be a guess, I would say less than five percent. Mainly the transactions we get are online, or they're bank draft, or they're credit card draft, or they're checks.
Thank you.
Okay, I, myself attended, uh, session securing long-term surface water supply for growing communities. That session, long and short of it, is how people are going away from the groundwater and focusing on surface water for their water needs. It, I was happy to hear that, um, they are really promoting SWIFT funding, letting people know. I think the interest rates on those things are like point zero nine or something. Is that correct? They're very low. They said, uh, an example, Houston had eight hundred and twelve million, uh, in there. There was one point, uh, one billion, I think, on West CIP, something like that. But anyway, the majority of, of people are going towards the surface water and the SWIFT funding. A lot of people didn't even, you know, know about it yet, so I was happy to see that Jennifer was all over that, um, way before the AWBD. The other one that I went to was, uh, pay now or pay more later, getting the best value of your water and wastewater assets. Again, our, uh, mud staff is on top of that one too, as far as putting, uh, longevity on the pieces of, uh, major assets that we have and, uh, building reserves to replace those or upgrade those. Uh, the last one I went to that comment on is embracing smart water meter technology. We went through, uh, uh, test, testing with ten people, I believe, in the past, and the whole issue, I was talking to the people at the, uh, exhibits in, at this, uh, presentation was, you know, not, it's not for everybody, and the cost of it, you know, is hard to swallow when you have people that, you know, don't use a computer or not computer, uh, literate. So you're basically financing that for something they'll never use. Uh, for new communities, it's beneficial to go with the Badger and meter that is automatically set up. Is that correct, Mike?
Uh, yeah, I think you're, you're talking about that beacon software and they're set up for it, but there still is a little bit of a change to go to that.
Like an HE or something meter that?
HR.
Yeah, HRE. Yeah, that's it.
LCD.
And that, and with any new construction, are we putting those types in?
Yeah, we're putting all the meters in, but yeah, just to use that cellular, you know, you just have to, it's just a plug and play endpoint change.
Right, right. So that was the other one, and I spoke to some people. I, I just turned it over to the staff to take over from there, uh, to check the numbers on it and bring it back at a future meeting to see if it's something we wanna look at, because with that technology, it can alert you basically instantly that, hey, you have a water leak. Um, it'll also, uh, give you your history. So these people that were concerned about high usage and, oh, I'm using all this water, it would alert them. They could put parameters on the system that would say, okay, if I use more than six thousand, you know, it would alert them, hey, you, you know, you're using more than six thousand. So those are the ones I went to. Director Rose?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm still building my book report here.
Well, we're the only ones.
Okay, well, I went, I, I went to, uh, I didn't build a book report for this. Went to Larry's Toolbox, and Larry's Toolbox was one of the presentations, and basically what's going on there is they, uh, looking for, looking at some infrastructure improvements, but, uh, rather than do those, uh, they're looking at reducing, uh, cutting back using conservation measures to save, uh, four hundred million dollars in infrastructure costs. And, uh, basically, it's, uh, they're saving on upsizing and expansion, and they need to reduce fifteen percent of the demand, uh, in order to do that. So they're doing a lot of public education, and they knew right up front that you couldn't go out and tell somebody you need to cut fifteen percent. So they went out and they're convincing people to save five percent, and they're being successful at it. So they're well on their way in that one. Uh, then I attended ethics considerations for districts, districts and emergency si- situations. Uh, basically, uh, learned what I already knew from, uh, reading the state statutes. Uh, let's see, pay now or pay more later, getting your best value for your water assets. Uh, basically talks about doing, uh, was talking about, uh, quality of maintenance and, uh, how you can invest now and perhaps save in the long run on, uh, on the value of your assets. Next one, I think, was nuts and bolts. Yep. Electrical maintenance. What you know, what you don't know, and what you don't know that you don't know. Saw a lot of electrical panels, talked about load shedding, talked about generators, talked about, uh, and this might be Roy P. Lackey, maybe a good person. I don't know if you know him to get in touch with. He's down at Harris County Mud Number Three Sixty-eight. The reason to mention that is because he has managed to convince his electric provider to fund some of his costs because they have an unstable A-phase system, ABC-phase system. It results in overheating and damage to their pumps. And so he talked about that, and I found that very interesting. But he was an electrical engineer, I'm sure, so it was rather, rather, uh, detailed and, and complex. Uh, the, probably the most important contacts or that I got from that, from being there, was to talk to two of the vendors. One of the vendors specializes in his, works kinda somewhat in this area, works with Penteo for one place, who is, uh, well services. And Penteo is all well, they have no service wa- service water. And he, and his group specializes basically in what I call downhole technology, looking at, uh, the screens, downhole, and, uh, treatments to ensure that your water system remains viable. He, he can tell us, look at studies. We talked about the trinitiographer, uh, and I was thinking it's just one great big reservoir down underneath the water. He said that's not really an accurate description. He says if you think of a bowl of flat spaghetti, flat noodle spaghettis, shake it up, turn it upside down, put it on a table, spread it around a little bit. He says you drill one place, you'll hit three or four noodles, and you got good water, you hit someplace and else, and you'll hit one. So it's, uh, it was an interesting discussion. Uh, if we get into a well issue, I can pass along his card, would be a person to contact, I think. The other one is, uh, how you contract to receive your electric power. And there may be a possibility, and I'll pass that card along to Jennifer, there may be a possibility. I don't, I don't know what our electrical contract for our power is now. Uh, there were different groups there who were involved in selling electric power, and this one fellow seemed to have a, an interesting presentation on how he felt that he could save us money. So with that, I'll conclude that report, um, and I guess I'll have to be on the agenda to do a new director workshop report.
On the what?
New, I was down for the new director workshop, so I.
Okay. Do you want that on the?
I would do it right now, given a nanosecond. But I'm not on the agenda.
Yeah, on the future agenda, you can add that.
Or we can forget it.
Note that, uh, put that on there.
It's, it's only required by that code of conduct thing.
One thing I wanna note, and it might be in your report, but about the AWBD, the winter conference, the sign-up date is August first. Is that correct? Uh, Jennifer sent out an email on that, and, um, do you all have logins for AWBD? Do you, Greg?
Yes.
Okay, so you can go in and set everything up. Uh, might wanna check with Jim Thomas first, because in the past, Mary has made, you know, reservations for the hotel, so. Okay, move it. Anything else on that?
It's Mary, M-E-R-R-Y.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, Merry Christmas.
I met her.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Jim, you had a good time not attending?
I did.
Okay, good.
After a while.
You went to Illinois, right?
You've been to all the classes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, next one is nineteen, general manager, monthly report for June twenty sixteen. A, water system operations. B, meterhead changeout programs. C, wastewater system operations. D, website analytics. E, finance update regarding utility billing reports. And I think that's all of them, right?
And the project status updates.
Oh, yes, F. I didn't scroll down far enough. Project, uh, status updates is F. Jennifer?
Okay, um, I'll just jump into the project status updates, and then we can back up, and you all can ask questions about the other reports. Um, the SWIFT funding application in the Northside two thirty-inch waterline project. I couldn't wait to share the good news, so I already did, but we did, um, we, we received the, uh, Fort Worth has signed the agreement, so has Westlake, so we've all signed the agreement, and they've sent them over to us, and it looks like the engineering's gonna be almost half what we thought, so that's really good news. Um, on the, uh, Northside forty-five inch waterline upgrade project, uh, this was really, really big check month. It just seemed like all the checks they were bringing in front of me were giant. We had a couple of million dollar ones to the wastewater plant, and then we did, at long last, get the invoice from the city of Fort Worth for the first part of that project up to Kaler Tank, the forty-five inch line, and our share was seven hundred and?
Seventy-nine-six something.
Yeah, so right at eight hundred thousand, um, on that one, and so we've now officially paid that, and that project is, is closed out as far as we're concerned. Um, the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, um, I did include with the packet this time a timeline, a, a schedule that has been, was provided to us by the contractor. They provide a schedule with their pay apps. Um, uh-oh, sorry. Um, so if you look on page four seventeen of your packet, we can talk any, as, as much as y'all want to about this schedule, but, um, then as far as the, oh, the wastewater treatment plant permit renewal. Um, the permit expires in September, so we've been kinda waiting and waiting to get news, and, um, I spoke with Larry, the permit writer, I guess a couple of weeks ago, and he was gonna be on vacation this week. There were some, some additional sampling that we, uh, do we complete that today, Carl? Yeah, we did, uh, it's like two-day test, so we did it Thursday and Friday of last week, and now Monday and Tuesday of this week. He's on vacation this week. We'll get the results over to him probably by the end of this week. Next week, when he gets back, he has to look through those, but he said that they are very close to having a draft permit for us, and they will send that over to us for review. Once we get that and, you know, work through any changes that, um, maybe we disagree with or that we feel like needs to be done differently in the draft permit, then we will get to the point of advertising, and we will have to advertise the permit for a length of time, and because we did have a, a legislature, a senator, contact TCQ about our permit renewal, we are gonna be required to have a public meeting. And it, TCQ staff will be present to hear comments from the public, and, um, we will get with them a little closer to time on the, what the information that they're gonna wanna have us present as far as how the plant works and how it's going to work when we get the project completed. But we will have to advertise that, and so the goal is to try to get to advertise those together, because it's five to ten thousand dollars for that advertisement. So we're hoping to get it timed so that we can advertise the actual permit renewal and the public hearing, I'm, I'm sorry, public meeting, which is different from a hearing, um, advertise those together. And the long and short of this is, it will be after our permit expires before we get a new permit. And that concerned me, but TCQ assured me that we are legally operating under our permit until a new permit is issued. So even if it goes six months that our permit is expired, we are still legally operating under that permit.
What did you say? Did you say a senator requested, uh, a, that we be, I guess, tested or examined for?
Someone complained to a senator, and the senator requested that, uh, it be reviewed.
A, a public meeting, that we ha- we host a public meeting.
Has the senator been identified to the public?
Yes.
Yeah, can we make sure that we invite that senator to attend?
Are we talking about Jane Nelson?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, we can certainly invite the senator to attend.
Just so she understands what TCQ hears and, okay.
It, and it is only a public meeting, which means it is more of a one-way communication of the public can provide comments to us, and that's really it. But, um, but anyway, the good news is that they're trying to kind of gauge these things together so that we won't have dual advertisements in the paper for that, and, um, and more importantly, that it's okay if we go beyond the date of our permit expiration, because it looks like it probably will before we get a new permit issued. Um, so with that, that's all really the project updates I have, so I'll just kinda back up and see what questions you all may have on the reports.
Well, we got down to the, uh?
Oh, yes, the?
We got down to the, uh, I don't know, projects, project schedule on the wastewater treatment plant, and, uh, previous discussion, we'd had, uh, the fact that the plant was phase one was, had slipped from, I can't remember what it was, May to, May to, we, we went through, we went to June, I mean, we went to July and August, and then it went to November. We missed September and October. So I'm trying to learn how to read this schedule. Uh, and if I read it correctly, it, does this, does the green mean that that's the areas that are now behind?
That's work remaining.
Yes, that, that's just work that's remaining, and the, I, I'm not sure if that's dark blue or black. I can't see it very well, but.
We have actual work, we have critical work, remaining work, and we have remaining work. And so I was just go- going through here, I mean, trying to figure out exactly.
Go, go to the top, Bill.
In phase one, I mean, we're talk, when is the phase one supposed to be completed now?
The, the contract milestones is really kind of?
The big picture?
The big picture. Uh, the rest are little details of when yard piping's gonna be delivered and that sort of thing. So it's important, but not so important in the big picture. So if you just look at the contract milestones.
What page is that?
Um, it's, I'm sorry, page four seventeen of your packet.
Thank you.
And at the very top, the very first chart, it says contract milestones, and if you kind of, um, scroll over to the right. scroll over to the right, you'll see, uh, where it shows the substantial completion of phase one, they're showing kind of mid-November. If you look at the top, you see October and then N is November and D is December. And it's halfway between them, so I take that to be about mid-November.
But this doesn't show any slippage. I mean, how do you tell, I mean, that's where it's now at, but how do you tell that it's slipping?
Well, that's not shown on here. You can go back to previous schedules that they've provided to us in the past. And from that, you can see where we're at. I mean, where, where it was and where we've gone to.
Who did this timeline? Us or them?
No, they do this. They submit these with their, um, pay requests, pay apps.
And I, I agree with Bill. It'd be nice to see where, you know, they can use one of those little milestone indicators similar to that and say this is where it was supposed to be done. Is that possible?
I, I can ask them to do that for you all to do this one time, but no, I can't ask them to do that for this particular. This is something that's required in the contract that they provide it like it is.
Okay, well, my, my question would be, because we've slipped phase one out there, but did we, did phase substantial completion, phase two also slip? Or, or did they just move phase one out? I mean, i- is, is that an accurate indication of where they really are at? Or is that, well, we'll move those out later?
No, the-
We don't know.
Um, no, they're, they're still saying that that schedule of substantial completion for phase three is supposed to be the end of twenty seventeen and that's what it's showing on here. So I believe they're showing that they just slipped out, but they have to slip those out equally because the, you know, they can't start the phase two until they finish the phase one because they're gonna, right, take that remaining, a, a portion of the plant that's in operation, take it offline to, to actually convert it for phase two. So these, what they're showing is what they're saying now that the schedule's going to be.
Well, they, they were also, when I was down there, they were asking about possibly working an additional day during the week. Have we ever-
Yes, we, we agreed to let them work on Saturdays and we've actually moved an employee's schedule to be there Tuesday through Saturday instead of Monday through Friday because we don't want them working without someone there watching. So we've, we've changed an employee's schedule temporarily to work Tuesday through Saturday. And it kinda overlaps with the on-call, so it, it was not a big deal. Um, I didn't hear him scream too loud. And, a- and actually, the, the wastewater guys wanna see this, they wanna see what happens. They don't wanna leave them out there either, so. So I think, um, there was, they were, he was very happy to, to do that so that he can make sure he knows what's going on. So, so we are allowing them to work on Saturday, so maybe that will speed things up a little bit.
Has that already, so, has that, was that already started?
Yeah, it's, well, it's, it starts this Saturday and it goes through September third or something.
This last Saturday.
Yeah, I thought, I thought they did work. The pat, the Saturday we just had before the meeting, that was the first Saturday they worked. And this will go through, we've given them approval through like September third.
Was there any additional costs associated with that?
No, I mean, other than, I mean, not even really an employee because we just changed his schedule to-
I just didn't know if we had to pay more because they're working on a weekend.
No, they, they still have a, they still have a contract time that they have to meet. And, um, so they can, you know, they can work at additional days if they want to, but, um, that's at their own choice, really.
Have they addressed any of those issues that we talked about, I think it was last meeting or something, or meeting before?
They've removed the, the con- the concrete that we, um, we did not wanna accept. They have removed that now and they've replaced it. We're still having, um, some discussion on some, the floor that they put in and the classifier building is not acceptable. It's just not acceptable. It's very bumpy and it looks terrible. And so I guess, is Kevin, is that this week they're gonna go out there with that floor specialist?
The epoxy person.
Actually, they already came out there.
They already did.
Uh, it was yesterday.
Yeah, no, there was like a, there's a floor specialist person. You're right, it was. Because Kevin said that he said this is not acceptable. I, they hired him, I guess, thinking he was gonna say it was okay and their specialist said, mm, no, this isn't acceptable, so.
The way they were gonna fix that.
Right, so I guess they're gonna work on getting that done.
Okay. Um, and we, I saw on the mailer, we did notify people that their, uh, sprinkler boxes could be off due to the power outages and surges. Is that correct?
Yes, we tried to put that in after any kind of a power outage that we're aware of that happens in town.
Do you wanna mention that we might, we're losing a person?
Sure, um, our communication specialist, Kari, is going back to school, so this coming week will be her last week with us. Um, we do, we have already advertised a new position and we have some interviews set up, but we're very sad to see Kari go.
And we're checked out though. So Miguel, watch out. Right, we're checked out on the movie.
Yeah.
I, I have a question. This, Carl, you've been there all meeting, all meeting and you haven't had to say anything. I got a question for you. Actually, two of them. On the June twenty sixteen, I'm on page four oh six. You probably have this all memorized. Four oh six.
All right.
Okay, on, on the, uh, first of January, TSS affluent rating is sixty.
Yes.
What happened?
First of June, you mean?
First of June, I'm sorry.
At the end of May, beginning of June, we had a lot of rain come through there. And since the week, we are actually doing our sampling, whichever week, cause the TCQ wants us to do, whichever week has the four days and that month is where you sample. Since the four days are in June, so you do June first, second, third, and fourth. You don't do the last days or in May, they roll into the June. And the rain hit us where it actually pushed all that water through there and that's why I had the sixty odd there.
So, so if we get a heavy rain, then we should expect that number to go up?
Well, at that point, yes, it, we did because we had a, a amount of rain for the last three days.
Okay.
Um, and that's why the plant is so, the capacity is not high enough. That's why we're going through this upgrade right now, cause we need the capacity. And that's one of the reasons why we're doing this.
So we, in some ways, exceeded the capacity of the plant's capability to resolve the TSS?
In time, yes.
In time. Okay, uh, next question I've got, and I've long meetings, so I've never asked the question. Next, on page four oh seven? There was a spike in the ammonia nitrogen? And I see the level on that drops in the summertime. What, what was the-
Are you talking about three point one and the point three?
Three point one one zero or whatever, that, that's the yellow spike there at the top.
In that time, what happened was, uh, Weber, they actually broke into our airlines.
Okay.
And it caused this problem we had and then they fixed it. And that's where I got the point three, went, went back down. We weren't actually able to actually do the treatment.
Say that again?
We weren't actually acle, actual to do the, the tra- the treatment.
You weren't able to?
Right, well-
Well, I mean, without the, without the air on that, on a particular-
Because the biological needs air to breathe.
Okay.
I think when y'all came out on the tour, I think we showed, we may have showed you where the, I, I was pointing out where the lines went under and that's where Weber had broken and that's the result of that happening.
Yeah, did we have to file any reports or anything on that? Because we'd, so we just, okay, got it, thanks.
Okay, and it, the permit limit from April to September drops, the permit limit drops down from April to September?
Yes, to a one. When, in the summer, it goes lower because, in the winter, it goes higher because it moves slower. It takes more treatment to actually, you know, do that.
More time with the good bugs.
They're like humor, humans, colder gets slower.
And they move slower.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That's all I had, thanks.
Anyone else have anything? Do you have anything else, Jennifer?
No, I don't have anything else.
You sure?
I'm sure. Oh, yes, I do, actually. You're right, you're right. I did wanna announce that on the, the meter changeout program and the meterhead changeout program, the guys, even being shorthanded to water guys while they were both having, um, hospital medical issues, they managed to get all of them completed. All of them that we had budgeted are completed. So, good job.
Good job, Mike.
Does, does that mean we're all through with that or does that just mean the ones that we were budgeted are through?
Well, that means we're all through for all the money we had this year and so-
More to go next year.
But we, sure, we've got more to go next year, but if you all budget and money for it. But, but for all that was done this year, they're done, so that was a great job.
Great.
And now I'm really done.
Okay, let me close the, uh, Jennifer?
Well, it's, it's kind of everybody, well, not of everybody, but how, uh, what do we need to do to schedule the public meetings to talk about rates? Uh, what the rates are going to be next year and projections the next couple of years. We talked about scheduling two or three meetings to go through that with the public. I don't know if that's something that we need to do here to get that started or we have to announce those as, I would imagine we have to announce it as part of a meeting, but I would like to make sure we get started on that. Where we, before rates go up, we have a couple of meetings where we meet with the public to say, this is how we got here. This is what we anticipate is gonna be over the next couple of years before they become effective.
For the water and sewer rates or for the tax rates, I'm-
The water and sewer rates, the ones we approved last week.
Okay, well, you didn't approve the rates yet. You only approved the si- the rates for us to include into, to place into an amended rate order, okay? So yes, so you haven't actually technically approved the rates. And we've already, we've got it ready to, um, include in the, the, the billing a public hearing on August sixteenth before you all approve them. We'll have a public hearing for that. Are you asking to do more than that public hearing?
I, I, I think we need to, given the in- increase, the percentage increase of the rates, not only for that, but what we anticipate happening over the next couple of years, I think we have to go out and make sure there's more than just one meeting where we sit down and explain to people, this is where rates are, this is where they're going to be. This is our best guess what they're going to be over the next couple of years.
Could we have a schedule like a town hall type meeting where, to talk about the rates, the water project? You know, it'd probably be beneficial to do it after the August meeting, after we determine what we're gonna do with the bond and-
Okay, and that's what I, why I was asking if he was talking about the tax rates because I, it was my understanding that we, we were gonna do those meetings as he was suggesting about the rates for the, you know, a possible bond election. I did not know it was something we wanted to do on the water and sewer rates, but we certainly can. I just, I don't, I think that's something that the, you know, when you say go out and do that, I guess the question is, what kind of venues do we wanna set up or are we talking about having meetings here? And that's not something I knew the board wanted to discuss tonight.
Well, I think I mentioned it and Jim Thomas also mentioned that if we're going, given the increase, the size of the increase in the water rates, we need to do a public campaign to make people aware of the, that the rates are going up and, and estimate of what we anticipate over the next couple of years. I think, given the size of the rate increases, I think we have to go for it and tell people that they're going up and why they're going up. And we kinda have a idea of the next couple of years that they will continue to go up. I think we need more than just telling them, watch the video, that we need to sit down, have a chance for them to ask questions and explain to them kinda where we are, how we got here.
And, and, and I'm, I'm, I can arrange that, however, but when you say we, I'm trying to understand, do you want staff to take care of this or do you want this to be a board event?
I'm, I'm asking, I, I don't, well, I think ultimately it would be the, the board presenting, but I don't know who needs to arrange it. But I just wanna make sure it gets done so we can figure out the logistics.
We're gonna, we're gonna put that on the future agendas and I have no problem with it, so if you would just send her an email.
Okay.
And just, you know, set that up, you know, whether it be a meeting time or another separate date, just to address those issues. I have no problem with, is that okay?
Yeah, but I'm, I think maybe I'm not understanding, but what I thought he's saying is to do this before the rate increase. Is that correct?
Before October, yes.
Before it goes into effect, October?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay. I wasn't sure if you meant before y'all were approving it because that's a month away. And that's what I'm saying, we can't wait to approve this till then.
Before the effective date, is that correct?
Correct.
Before the effective date.
Clear as mud.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, uh, gen item number, uh, anything else on that gen item? Report, okay. Gen item twenty, we don't have anything on that, so we'll go through to twenty-one. There's nothing. We didn't go to executive session. Twenty-two, items for future agenda, uh, Vice President Wilson just mentioned something. And then we had something that, uh, Director Rose had earlier as far as the new director thing.
My new director speech?
Do you wanna put that on there or what?
It's only require, I wouldn't do it.
Okay, so, not, he doesn't want-
Required by the code of conduct.
I was trying to forget about it for you, but-
Okay, so that's gonna be on the future agenda. Anybody else have anything else?
I, I've really forgot that he attended that.
Possibly changing the IT replacement to sewer replacement.
Okay, so that needs to be on there too as far as- Okay, reallocate IT funds to general?
Yeah, the GASB repl- changing it to sewer.
Mm-hmm. Well, I thought it was general.
Well, why not just put in a general fund, then you have the flexibility to do whatever you want with it.
Well, I guess what Renee and I were thinking is that we were directed that for the new budget that we're gonna be bringing back to y'all to have a GASB for sewer. And so this kinda led right into that and that makes sense.
A gen item talking about GASB, GASB allocation or something, okay? And stop thinking so much, okay? Okay, uh, anything else for future agendas? Anyone? Okay, we'll move on to item twenty-three, my favorite attend item. Uh, announced meeting date, budget workshop is August eleventh, twenty sixteen at nine PM and- AM, excuse me, and regular meeting, August sixteenth, twenty sixteen at six PM. Anyone have any problem with those meeting dates?
We actually can't change the regular meeting date because we have already announced that that's gonna be our public hearing date. So, but the, if, if the budget workshop is not working, that's, that is somewhat flexible.
Right now, I don't have any problem.
That date.
Okay. Everyone have those dates?
What's, what's the budget workshop, eleven?
August eleventh at nine AM. Central standard time. Everybody good? Okay, if you have any problems and you're gonna notify, uh, Director Thomas of those dates, right? Make sure you don't have any conflicts. Okay, now my very first, okay, uh, okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I second it.
Okay, motion made by Director Rose, seconded by Vice President Wilson. All in favor? Show hands.
I'm in favor.
Okay, we're adjourned at ten fifty-seven.